Okay, let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Ms. Dunn.
Your Honor, Honorable Judge Ron Schaber.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Marler.
Here.
Doug Soschow.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Present.
Quinn Anderson.
He has an excused absence.
Lisa Northrup.
As does she.
And Kevin Lindell.
I'm here.
First on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the June 19th, 2018 council regular meeting. Ms. Dunn?
Draft copies included in your packet and submitted for approval by resolution.
Has everybody had a chance to review them? Are there any questions or revisions, or if not, I would accept a resolution.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to accept the minutes from our June 19th regular city council meeting.
Second then? I have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Doug Soschow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries on in unanimous vote of five to zero with council members Anderson and Northrup assent.
Next, we have swearing in of five new police officers. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I state your name. Do affirm that I will support.
Do affirm that I will support.
Protect and defend the Constitution and government of the United States of America.
Protect and defend the Constitution and the United States of America.
And the Constitution and government of the State of Colorado.
And the Constitution and government of the State of Colorado.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Whether foreign or domestic.
Whether foreign or domestic.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance and loyalty to the same.
And allegiance and loyalty to the same.
In the ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding.
In the ordinance, resolution, or law.
Notwithstanding.
Notwithstanding.
Notwithstanding. And that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will well and faithfully perform.
All duties of officer, duties of the office of police officer.
Duties of the office of police officer.
On which I am about to enter.
Of which I am about to enter.
Which I have been duly appointed under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Which I have been duly appointed under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Form for each of you to sign.
Welcome aboard, all of you.
Hmm? Not yet. You need to give him an official, the mayor. William? Anthony? Mike? You, welcome aboard.
We have a tradition in the police department that each new officer gets to select who he or she would like to pin their badge on. So we'll start with Officer Ben Pomo. Would you like to feedback?
Please. Please come on down.
A little bit about Officer Ben Pomo. He was with the Ray Police Department and reported at Morgan County Sheriff's Office. He's bilingual. He's a Fort Morgan resident, certified police officer, a new homeowner here in Fort Morgan. Married and has one child. Welcome aboard. Officer Wayne Kent, would you like to?
My mother.
Please have him come down. A little bit about Officer Campbell. He joins us from the Lake County Sheriff's Office. He's also a certified police officer in our state. Prior to that, he worked for the lead bill police department. He's an Army veteran. And though not a Fort Morgan resident, he has assured me he will be a future Fort Morgan resident. Welcome aboard. Officer Shapiro, would you like to sign? A little bit about Officer Shapiro. He joins us from the Morgan County Sheriff's Office. He's a recent graduate of the Flat Rock Police Academy. He's a Fort Morgan resident, married, with three children. Welcome aboard. Officer Jordan Hickel. Would you like to? A little bit about Officer Hickel. She was raised in Fort Morgan until the age of seven. She's a graduate of the Colorado Mountain College Police Academy. She's currently a Fort Morgan resident. She is our third female officer. Officer Chris Penney. Who would you like to? Very nice. A little bit about Officer Penney. He joins us from the Morgan County Sheriff's Office. He's a lifelong Fort Morgan resident. He's bilingual, obviously a certified officer. And again. Beautiful girl there. That was probably the most intense badge pinning I've seen. She was really concentrating. Get that done. So, a couple of words. We're excited to get these officers on board. I don't know who's more excited they are or myself, but we are now at full strength. Every position in the police department has been filled. And we're very excited to get them through training and back on patrol. So again, I think a round of applause is in order and congratulations and welcome aboard.
Good luck and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and go with them.
We need you for a little bit longer.
Okay, next on our agenda is a presentation by SE group on the final draft of our Trails Master Plan. Mr. Hamer and SE group representatives.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. As most of you are aware, we've been working for about a year now with the SE group on a master trail plan and connectivity plan. I'm going to introduce Gabby and Ellie, and they're going to give you a little presentation on their second round draft. It's not the final plan yet, but draft two is what we call this. And you have some packets on your folder that have maps included in them. They'll probably be referring to those maps off and on as they give you their PowerPoint. So Abby, or Ellie and Gabby, here you go.
I'm going to stand over here so that the audience and the council can...
If you wouldn't mind, you're going to need to stand at the microphone or nobody on television.
Can I try to project?
Well, this is being broadcast on...
For recording purposes?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Maybe I'll just try to stand aside then. Okay, so we, the city of Fort Morgan got a Great Outdoors Colorado grant last year for about $100,000, which the city matched. And we kicked off the project with an open house at Party in the Park. I don't know if you remember, we had some boards up, asking people some questions about their experience biking in the city, what they like to do for fun on the weekends, at the park, that kind of thing. And so now, almost a year later, we have this plan that will be really used as a guiding document for Ty's department, for Public Works Department, to really think through some of these issues. How do we address sidewalks? Where should we build trails? What are really issues for connectivity and recreation in the community? So we're just going to give you an overview tonight. We're finishing the last chapter, which is kind of the policy and recommendations chapter. And then it will be your plan to figure out what you want to do with. And usually, these plans last about 10 or 15 years. So although, you know, the momentum is high, you want to get started on some easy stuff. Don't feel like you have to do everything at once. I mean, I know there's not money to do everything at once. But to really have this as a guiding document for parks, trails, and connectivity around Fort Morgan. Just use the arrow. So, at the very beginning of the planning process, we worked with a group of stakeholders. Two city council members, Allison and Lisa, were on that group. And we came up with a bunch of goals for the plan. So I'm not going to read through all of them, but overview. We want to create an inviting experience for residents and visitors, for transportation, recreation. Expand the existing trail network. And what you have at Riverside is great, but I think people want more of that experience. We have the Tuamore Farm property across the river, which is a potentially new park extension. So what are some ideas for that area? We'll talk about that a little bit. A lot of folks talked about how it's not comfortable to walk around their neighborhood with their kids, have their kids walking and biking to school. So what can we do to address that? That was a major goal of the plan. And then we also talked about regional connections. So in Colorado, people love bike tourism, where they can go from one community to the next, kind of create that, that, what's the bike route on the plains? Ride the plains?
Pet pedal the plains.
Yeah, pedal the plains. So things like that, where you can go from one community to the next to create these kind of larger systems. There's a lot of momentum for that in the state, so we wanted to include that here. And then we really wanted to talk about key areas that were more important, such as downtown, near schools, near parks, near Walmart, near Cargill. Where are people coming from and going to most frequently, and have those be kind of higher priority areas? So that's something we also addressed in the plan. So here are just some photos of the different outreach events. We had that party in the park. We had a couple events at the library and at the city annex with the stakeholder group. They were, do you have anything you want to say about the stakeholder group?
Oh, I really appreciated that we included...
I really appreciated that we included members from the school district. So I think that was a really strong partnership. And I thoroughly enjoyed working with the SE group.
Great, thank you. And so then this is our final meeting for this, for this project. And so if you look, these were the areas that we addressed. So we looked at Tuamore Farm as kind of its own area in that box north of the highway. And we also looked at the golf course. The golf course is a little underutilized in terms of it being a city property that could be used for more than just golf. There's a lot of lands there that could be used for trails as well. So we looked at the golf course property. And then we divided the city into four quadrants, so we could really dial down into different neighborhoods that had different needs. So as you'll look through those maps, we're not going to go into too much detail tonight. There's a lot of things on the agenda. But we looked at them at, you have a very easy grid city. It's really easy to divide it into spaces to kind of look at the different quadrants. So that was pretty easy for us to think about it that way. What's the next, it's your turn? Great. So my colleague Ellie's going to talk a little bit more about the details of the planning chapters.
So, the first place that we looked at to design trails was the Tuamore Farm property. So that's right across the river from Riverside. It's currently, you can see the pictures. It's very flat. There's some trees. There was a lot of flood damage actually in 2013. There's sort of a sandy area down by the river when the river is low. So what we have on there are trails, both sort of a wider, actually. So that top right picture, a wider 5K cross-country loop that the high school was interested in. And then sort of narrower trails designed for biking and near the parking area, sort of an introductory biking area. But a lot of the trails would sort of look like the ones in the top left. And then with that sandy area, having it be a place that when it's nice out and the river's low, you can go and set up on the beach, have an inner tube. And then sort of a longer-term goal was a bridge across the river to Riverside, so you could really make a loop. And that's a picture we have in there of a bridge that would not be susceptible to flood damage. And so Gabby mentioned, we also looked at the golf course. When we were walking around there with Ty, we were shocked at sort of, as you go back in there, the amount of native land there was and how much space there would be for trails. And that this would be a really great opportunity to bring more residents of the city to the golf course. Especially, yeah. And so what we were looking at for there was also some of these more narrow trails. And really also thinking about how it would work to have trails right around a golf course. You would need a lot of signs telling people, "Bike here, play golf here," or all of the rules around making that work. Okay. And so then, sort of the bulk of the plan ended up being a really close look at the city, at those four quadrants. Talking about walking, biking, and crossing as sort of the three ways, or way of dividing it. And so we looked at really pretty, every sidewalk and intersection in the city on Google Street View, the entire city's on there practically, and what wasn't, we went and looked at ourselves to really think about how, how the improvements should happen in Fort Morgan. So starting with walking, looking, we did a pretty in-depth analysis of all the sidewalks. You can see on the top left, all of those indicators. So every sidewalk we checked, like, was it there? What type of sidewalk it was? How wide was it? And so these are sort of pictures of some of the more lesser, some of the less good sidewalks we saw around the city. There were definitely some places where the sidewalks stopped mid-block. That's, the next picture is the approach to the Sherman Railroad crossing, where the sidewalk has a lot of cracks in it. The next one, I think, is in front of Cargill. And that's first off a very narrow slope sidewalk, and also has a signpost in the middle. So if you were on a bike or a wheelchair, you really couldn't pass through that point. Other cracks and faults that make it difficult to wheelchair, bike, stroller, even just walk. And then something we saw, especially along Platte, where all of these large curb cuts, where the entrances to businesses would be this sort of massive driveway, basically. And that's a whole space where a pedestrian walking along the sidewalk could, you know, a car could come across them. And so it's, you try to minimize sort of the amount of space where a pedestrian is vulnerable to that. So we took all of those indicators that were on that list, assigned them point values, and then applied those to all of the intersections, or all the sidewalks in the city, giving them a score and then a rating of places where there were no sidewalks. And then orange is poor, and then dark green is great. And so that's sort of a, like, as the city thinks about which sidewalks to improve, seeing which of them are in worse shape, either for, you know, their curb cuts, for their, like, cracks. Or we also tried to think about what was near priority areas where there would be a lot of pedestrians. So as you can see on the maps that I think only you guys have, we made recommendations for all the places where we had no sidewalks that existed. So if there was no sidewalk on either side, that's a primary sidewalk recommendation. And then for places where either one existed on one side, or we recommended a primary sidewalk on the other side, that was a secondary recommendation, so not as high of a priority. Other recommendations that we've made in the plan are places to improve the sidewalk conditions, so places where you see those cracks and faults. Widen existing sidewalks. So the city of Fort Morgan development code has a four-foot minimum. The general, the United States Access Board Public Right-of-Way Guidelines is five feet. That's really what you need, to have two people being able to walk next to each other comfortably, or two wheelchairs to pass each other. And so obviously, that's not going to happen immediately, just changing all of your sidewalks to five feet, but changing the development code and looking at that in also more important areas. So that picture is right in front of Fort Morgan High School, which is, you know, if you're going to have a wide sidewalk anywhere, that's a great place to have it. There were some places where we added a multi-use path, so that is like a sidewalk, only it's wider. It's a space where the bicyclist also wouldn't be comfortable in the roadway, so it's wide enough to accommodate both bicycles and pedestrians in the same sort of off-street accommodation. Places where there weren't, or where the sidewalk didn't last the entire block, filling in the gaps, and then mitigating large curb cuts. So what that was on, that picture showed on Platte, and that's actually a picture, I think in front of the Maverick Gas Station, where you would have this really wide entrance, but that thing in the middle sort of creates a safer space for pedestrians there. And other strategies that could also be used going forward, shared driveways in future development, limiting sort of the number of times that cars drive across a sidewalk. Chicanes are these, sort of, they make, putting a median island in the center of the roadway to make a car sort of drive in an S shape, slowing them down, making them less likely to hit a pedestrian, and then more lighting along sidewalks. So then we did a similar analysis of intersections. You can see there's the indicators we used. Again, we created a scoring system that went from red, needing improvement, to dark green, where they were pretty good, didn't really need improvement. And so those are pictures on top of some really good things we saw. Intersections throughout Fort Morgan, pedestrian signals on West Street by Legion Field. This bulb out on Main Street, that forces cars to drive slower on the corner, and also just reduces the length of time the pedestrian is in the crosswalk. It's a shorter crosswalk. And then warning signs for pedestrian crossings. Some things that needed improvement, where a lot of places, especially in the northeast corner of the city, you have these non-accessible curb ramps, or really no curb ramp, making it really difficult for a wheelchair, a bike, a stroller to get on the sidewalk. And then also places where, just with all the wind and dust that you have here, the sidewalk, or the crosswalk has become really faded and difficult to see. So some of our recommendations for crossings, adding curb ramps to, in all the intersections throughout the city, especially thinking about sort of where people need to cross by schools. The rectangular rapid flashing beacon, that... The rectangular rapid flashing beacon, that, so that's the same thing that there is currently by the new middle school. And we recommend that on Barlow and County Road Eight for safer crossing there. And then a stop yield sign in front of Cargill as those cars go around the corner. There's also on your maps a bunch of places where we marked enhanced pedestrian crossing. That's places where sort of further study would be needed of traffic volumes to determine whether it would be a stop yield sign, whether it would be a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, or whether, the picture on the far right is of a hawk. That's pretty similar to those pedestrian signals you have in front of Columbine Elementary and Green Acres that turn red when someone wants to cross. But these are sort of, they look a little bit different, so drivers know that they're really oriented towards pedestrian crossings. And just, yeah, some other things around crossings was lengthening the crossing signals so pedestrians have time to cross before it turns red. Installing crosswalks in a few locations around schools. Tightening the curb radius, that middle picture, that's sort of what I was talking about with bulbouts, where you make it a tighter corner and drivers will go more slowly, and it's just a shorter distance to cross. And then putting lighting around crossings, especially ones that have a lot of nighttime activity. So one thing that really came up in our stakeholder group was the railroad crossings is a really dangerous place for pedestrians. Some of them don't have sidewalks on either side. Some of them, I mean, the one by Sherman Street really came up is, this one needs a lot of work, especially with the number of people trying to go to Baker Elementary School from the south side. And so one of our ideas was an overpass. Those two are both tall enough to accommodate double-decker trains. That's obviously sort of a very long-term goal, it would be fairly expensive, so we... Also just sort of thought about how we could have a short-term solution for that railroad crossing, and with that, the intersection that's right next to it. So the top-left view is looking south from the north side. And so widening the sidewalks, creating sort of a gentler grade up to them. And then with that intersection next to it, crosswalks in all four corners, tightening those curb radius, a little bit less so at that intersection where you see, or at the corner where you see the truck, just because of the amount of traffic coming through there. And planting trees to create a more pleasant walking environment. And so the last sort of way of getting around the city we analyzed was biking. So these are facts from your comp plan, that only 0.3% of residents bike to work. There are two existing bike lanes in the city. One is on Riverview by the cemetery. The other one is near the new middle school. And that one's actually really narrow. It's only about, I think, like, three feet wide for a bicyclist, whereas usually want five to six feet at least. And also 9.8% of households do not own a car. So that's higher than Denver. And so you have a lot of households who would really need a way of getting around town and getting to work and school that doesn't involve a vehicle. And so the bicycle, the bicycle recommendation map we have is actually very similar to the map that was drawn in your comp plan. We just made a few really small modifications. But we did go through with each of the segments, creating a cross-section of what the bike lane should look like there. So, actually, that top-left is the multi-use paths that I was talking about earlier, where you have room, it's sort of like a wider sidewalk, so there's room for both bicyclists and pedestrians. The top-right is a parking-protected bike lane, so that's for a very wide road with vehicle traffic. And so you're putting the bicyclist on the opposite side of the parked cars. The bottom-left is just a bike lane where they are next to the cars, but it's five feet wide, so that's safe for them, too. And then the bottom-right is for narrower roadways where the bicyclists do travel in the lanes of traffic, but with the painted symbols and slower-moving traffic, they're safe there, too. And so now, thinking towards implementation, so this is sort of the chapter that's still in development, where basically every, we have all of these recommendations for all of the sidewalks that need widening, that need, you know, that have frequent cracks. And so that's kind of a long, overwhelming list and table. But so we wanted to sort of create this matrix of what are some of the actions that you could take more eas, or sort of how to categorize them, and sort of pick out what makes sense for you, given your budget at that time or whatever. And so, you know, the Lake Street overpass, yes, it's of high community priority, but that's definitely going to be difficult to implement with cost, with the railway. And so thinking about some of these like, easy-to-implement, high-community-priority items, like repainting the crosswalks, or updating the development code and bike lanes.
That's basically an overview. Do you guys have any questions for us, or regarding the plan? Or how we can continue to help you for the last couple of weeks that we're working on this project?
Was Steve Glanmeyer involved in this? Sounds like a lot of, this involves him as well.
She has, is he here tonight? Okay, you are. Do you want to say anything?
Steve can't wait to bike across the city, huh?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I did attend two of the meetings that they had. This project started before I started here, but I certainly did attend two of those meetings. I have the plan with me tonight. I've had it on my desk and certainly have not read the thing in its entirety, but JW and I are working through it and looking at all of the recommendations. There's a lot of work in this plan. But as you know, a lot of the things that were discussed are things that were required to take care of anyway. Anytime we improve a street, we have to upgrade the handicap ramps and those types of things. We look at repairing crosswalks, we need to do those as well. Other sidewalk programs we have in place, as you know, and certainly repair sidewalks as we can. So all the things are on the list. There certainly is a mountain of things, as you know, but we're certainly chipping away at those, and we do have the plan and are working with it, so.
Thanks, Steve.
And one thing that we really tried to do, thinking of Steve and his team in mind, was that we did a lot of analysis so that he wouldn't have to. So hopefully, he can use this analysis to see which ones need to go from bad to okay, or good to great. A lot of times, it's better to get the bad to okay. And so we have that list for him, and realizing that you really want to create efficiencies, so that when he's already working on a street, maybe he'll say, "Okay, let's look up that street or that block. What else could we do while we already have the crew over there? Could we repaint something? Could we redo a curb ramp?" And so we really don't want to create this long, long, long list. We want it to be something that he can use for things that are already in his work program.
Very good. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
I'm having the school district there. It was nice because we talked about joint projects, like with crosswalks in front of school, and going for funding from Safe Routes to School again, because we did one grant, and some of you who lived here longer might know when we put in that path from Logline Village to get to Columbine. Anyone remember that? Maybe? Anyway, but it's been done before, but it's just something that hasn't had momentum in a long time. So this plan was really important for us to have the right people in the room to start those conversations again, and then having this tool. So, yeah, my favorite part is going to be the implementation chapter, so we can kind of get a good look at, yeah, it's definitely those budget numbers and what departments we need to bring in.
Right. And a lot of times, these GoCo Planning Grants, you use the GoCo Planning money to create a plan, and then that helps you launch into an infrastructure grant. So having the plan saying, "This plan, we know what our top five things are, and then our plan says that, and you can use that to go for a new pedestrian light, or a new bike lane, or whatever it is that's important for your community." But having the plan, I think, will really help you continue to get more state money in Fort Morgan. So I'm optimistic.
Me, too.
Well, as you said, it's a 10-year, they're good for 10 years. And if we keep it, dust it off and utilize it once in a while, I think we can make some progress with it. It looks like a well-thought-out plan, and I appreciate the work, Steve.
Yeah, one last thing. There was an idea at the last stakeholder meeting, too, for anyone that wants to continue working on these issues in the community, to have a quarterly group, whether that would be headed by one of the city council members that were a part of the group, whether it be headed by Ty or Steve, to just think through, okay, what grant cycles are coming up? What's in the work plan for Public Works for the next six months? Revisit the plan, revisit the walking, like, is there an intersection that had a really bad crash recently? What happened there? So have a kind of a quarterly community group that makes sure that these issues kind of stay at the forefront of people's minds. So that's one thing I would definitely hope, hope that you guys continue, once we're, once we're gone, so.
So Gabby, you said that the implementation chapter is still in process? What's the next step for that? What's going to come beyond what we see up there?
Well, so there's about 10 pages of very detailed tables of every single recommendation. This is kind of an overview of some recommendations, of some major ones that we talked about tonight. And then we'll have strategies for where to continue to apply for grants, and different ways to carry forward, so working with Public Works, applying for GoCo funds, having this quarterly working group, you know, different ways to kind of, to keep, keep it going. We have all the information, it just needs to be put together, and we hope to do that over the next two weeks.
Okay.
So you'll have this plan in final form by the end of the month.
Okay, and I think Councilmember Howe mentioned some, did you mention budget numbers or dollar figures?
We have cost estimates for pretty much every recommendation.
Okay, yeah, great.
So hopefully, that will be helpful and not too intimidating.
We love numbers.
It's a process.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, Gabby and Ellie.
Next is presentation on bids for police vehicles. Commander Crone. We're done.
Meeting, Mayor and Council, what I have in front of you is a discussion for purchasing two different types of police vehicles. As part of our capital improvement plan, we look at our current vehicles and other capital items, and just to make sure that they're still in, you know, decent working order if we need to do any replacements. We analyze that every single year. This year, we're in the need of replacing two police vehicles. Both of them are 2005 Crown Victorias that have excessive miles. We've had some issues with some maintenance things, some of the paint and so on. I think one of them that we're getting rid of, also just the cost of painting it, as an example, is going to be more than what the actual value would be on a blue book value. We get very little money on auctions, anyway. It's just, it's kind of met its, met its end. These police vehicles are replacements, going to be an administrative vehicle, another law enforcement vehicle that we use as well. We received some bids. One of the bid received from a vendor was for a Ford Explorer XLT. We also received two bids from two of the vendors for a Dodge Durango. These vehicles fall under the capital item, under the funding source for specifically vehicles. The budgeted amount for all of them would have felt, fallen within what was budgeted specifically for replacement vehicles this year. The one bid we received was from Spradley Bar for a 2019 Ford Explorer XLT. The other one from local Ehrlich for a Dodge Durango. Now, on here, it says Sterling, but this is actually local here in Fort Morgan. And also from Johnson's Auto in Brighton. Our recommendation is that Council accept the bid from Spradley Bar to purchase one Ford Explorer XLT for $31,406. And also accept the bid from Ehrlich in Fort Morgan for one Dodge Durango SSV for $27,500. I would ask that the Council vote to approve or disapprove the above-mentioned staff recommendation. All right, that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Just kind of clarification, I guess. Spradley Bar, is there, what's the rationale for the Ford and the Dodge difference as opposed to getting both of them locally, I guess, would be?
We didn't have a bid to look at.
Pardon me?
We didn't have a bid for the one vehicle we're looking at locally.
Oh. Okay.
The best answer I can give you, as far as different makes and models, is we're trying to diversify our fleet.
Because?
These cars will not be used for patrol purposes. They'll be used for investigative purposes.
Oh, okay.
And all of our investigative cars are all the same.
You mean they stand out?
They're identical. Which I'm not really sure why that is, but we're trying to diversify and have a fleet that's made up of many different makes and models.
That I understand. Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions, or?
No.
There are none. I would entertain a resolution for approval, denial, or?
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Spradley Bar for one Ford Explorer XLT for $31,406, and the bid from Ehrlich CDJR for one Dodge Durango SSV for $27,500.
Second. Have a resolution by Allison Howe, and second by Doug Sashow. Vote by, roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously?
Thank you.
Enjoy the undercover.
So these will still need to be outfitted?
One of them will, yes. Next Tuesday, we'll be doing the outfitting part of it as well.
Okay.
Next is presentation of possible action on bids for a heavy-duty work cart for the golf course. Mr. Givens.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you know, we had approved a utility cart, heavy-duty utility cart, in the budget for $40,000. However, we released a formal bid on June 6th, made it available at City Hall. And we did get two bids, one for a Toro from LL Johnson for $27,701, one for Potestio Brothers Equipment for a John Deere for $26,588. We're requesting Council approval to accept the bid in the amount of $26,588 from Potestio Brothers.
Does anybody have any questions for Matt?
Thanks for coming under budget.
Yeah, no problem.
There are no questions, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the bid from Potestio Brothers for a utility cart for $26,588.
Second.
Have a resolution by Allison Howe, and second by Dan Marler. Vote by, roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a minor subdivision of Sol Nociente at 220, 322 Linda Street. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comment to the issues before the Council. Each speaker is asked to limit their comment time to three minutes unless speakers represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations, as I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under the guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I deem it to be necessary in light of the number of people who have signed up to testify. First is a legal notice. Mrs. Dunn, has it been properly noticed?
A notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on June 14.
Next is presentation of the applicant, application. Mr. Glanmeyer.
Okay, thank you. This is case number 18-017MS. This is a minor subdivision of the Sol Nociente property. This is located at 322 Linda Street. When Sol Nociente developed years ago, the city committed to taking ownership of the two stormwater detention ponds that are located on-site. the city committed to taking ownership of the two stormwater detention ponds that are located on site. And that has never occurred simply because we've never subdivided the parcels so that we could take deed ownership of those parcels, so that's what you have before you tonight. We've worked with Community Resources and Housing Development Corporation to create subdivision you have in your packet. It's a three lot subdivision, so it falls in the minor subdivision category. Didn't require a sketch plan because it's pretty simple and doesn't require a preliminary plat according to the code. We've reviewed this a couple of different times. We also took this to the Planning Commission at their June 25th meeting, and they did approve this case and recommend it to you for approval tonight. We've received no comments or questions about this other than one question to make sure it didn't impact their parcel, which it doesn't. So staff finds that all of the code requirements have been met and the applicable subdivision requirements are met, so we would recommend approval of this case tonight. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Glenn Meyer?
So just to clarify, it's just pretty much a paperwork issue, just making these subdivisions so on paper?
Yep.
We can then?
We can take deed ownership of those, yeah. It actually does separate the parcels, you know, into separate parcels so that we can take ownership of them.
Okay, thanks.
And these are the stormwater ponds that are contiguous with that property, correct?
That's correct. One of them's located off of Linda Street and the other one sits actually behind the, the site, but they're tied together in a way, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Next we'll hear comments from the applicant. Since we're the applicant, I guess we've heard them. Public comments, is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I would ask this clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this hearing.
None more received.
Council discussion, is there any questions for council or any discussion?
No, not for me.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Your Honor, move we close the public hearing?
Second. I have a motion by Doug Sashow, a second by Kevin Lindell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Council action, Mr. Myers.
Council has the opportunity to either approve or deny the application. The standards would be presented in your memo. If you feel that they have been met, you should approve it. If you feel that they have not, you should deny it.
I would entertain a resolution accepting or denying the minor subdivision for Sol Nociente.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to approve case 18-017MS for the application for a minor subdivision for Sol Nociente at 322 Linda Street.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously?
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for consideration of an application for a variance for parking regulations for Calvary United at 300 Dual Street. Once again, this is a public hearing and the same rules we apply to this as the previous one. First is the issue of legal notice. Mrs. Dunn, has it been properly noticed?
A legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on June 14.
Presentation by Mr. Glenn Meyer.
Okay, this is case number 18-005VA. This is a variance request to the parking standards within the Fort Morgan Municipal Code, Chapter 20, Article 6, for the Calvary University located at 300 Dual Street. Council will remember that back on February the 6th, the new owners of the old middle school came in to request a special use permit to operate a college at that location, which was approved by this body. At the time of the approval, the limited off-street parking was discussed at length, you may recall. The new, new owners understood the limitation of the small parking lot that existed on site that limited the number of students they were able to operate under to 50, based on the parking standards. At this time, they would like to increase that number of students to approximately 300, which would require 150 off-street parking stalls, which they don't have currently. So they have requested a variance to allow existing on-street parking adjacent to their parcel to count toward that off-street parking requirement. They did include a map in their application. You may have, you may see that in your packet. It shows approximately 158 parking stalls available. These are parking stalls that are currently undelineated, that is to say they're not striped on the street, so that would need to occur should this be approved tonight. And again, these parking stalls would be located adjacent to their property on West Kiowa Avenue, West Beaver Avenue, and both sides of the newly opened Dual Street, but they are on-street parking stalls instead of off-street parking. The, you see the narrative that's been included in your packet? And then I've also included in my memo the criteria for which a variance would be approved. They included a narrative trying to articulate how they meet all seven of those criteria. We did review the application and supporting documents. The existing street right-of-way does appear to be wide enough to accommodate on-street diagonal parking as they've requested. It's just barely wide enough, but it is wide enough according to our standard, should you allow it tonight. As I stated previously, the street does not currently have those spaces delineated, so we would request that if this variance is approved tonight, that the college be responsible to have the parking spaces marked with material and in a manner that's appropriate by the city. We can work with them to explain how that needs to happen and, and help them with delineating those out in the field. So with that, we've not received any comments about this issue to our office as of the date of this memo, and I didn't receive any today. So we would ask that you, acting as the zoning board of appeals, would carefully consider this case. This is a lot of on-street parking. If approved, again, we would request that the variance would expire should Calvary University cease to operate at this location and sell or vacate the facility. We'd also request that those parking spaces would meet all of our requirements and that the college be responsible to delineate those spaces on the street so that they're readily accessible and visible to any students that may be parking there. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this case of me.
I got a question.
Yes.
On one page in the packet it indicated, and I believe this came from Cavalry, Cavalry University, about seven foot wide space by 15 foot deep. I don't know if I was reading that correctly, but then the city documents indicated that they needed a bigger space than that. So I guess I'm wondering, are, is there really the space necessary to get the parking that they're looking for?
I do believe, and we didn't delineate those out, I didn't measure it, certainly didn't design for them the parking stalls on the site. The street is wide enough to accommodate the 18-foot required depth. You know, again, not having measured the street specifically, we do require that they be eight foot in width. So certainly, again, if you allowed the parking, we would have them delineated, and then the number of students allowed would be two times the number of spaces provided, right? So if they were only able to get 140 spaces on the locations that they requested, then they could have two times that, so. Does that make sense?
Yes. Have, have they expressed any plans to make any of their own parking?
Well, we have discussed one idea that, at length, and that is Dual Street in particular. That street's awful wide through there, and we have discussed the possibility of sometime in the future coming back to this body to vacate part of that right-of-way, to allow access through as public right-of-way, but to give them ownership of portions of the north and south sides of that to create off-street parking. Outside of that, we've certainly had discussions about the empty field that exists. They could certainly turn some of that into parking. And then, of course, there's, there's other land, you know, they've got modulars and things. I don't know how that would work for them, but certainly the large field is, is open as well. They've talked about potentially looking at that for housing in the future. And of course, any housing that's created has its own off-street parking requirements, so those things only go up in value as you develop.
Thank you.
But the applicant is here tonight, so I'd be happy to let you have that conversation with them as well.
So this doesn't include that grassy area as a parking lot?
It does not. This is, the request tonight is to allow the existing on-street right-of-way, public right-of-way to be utilized for off-street parking requirements.
Is there any parking set up on Maple Street, or is that?
Yeah, Maple's the one that they did not include in their map, and, and so I don't believe they intended to utilize that space at all, that current right-of-way for any additional parking.
Then there's that apartment complex straight across on the south side of Kiowa, directly across from there, which has, I believe, a few diagonal parking already there?
They do, yep, that's correct. It's delineated as diagonal parking on that.
So are they?
What would be the south side?
Are they specifically limited to the number of students they can have due to the number of parking or the amount of parking that they have?
That is correct.
So if we, if we did not approve this, that would pretty much limit their capacity to grow in any way, shape, or form, is that, or in any physical on-campus form, is that?
Well, I certainly don't know all of the nuances to how they educate. You know, there could be online possibilities or various things.
Right, but physically on-campus?
Physical on-campus, the parking requirements are two students for every space, currently.
Get spaces if they did turn the grass lot into a parking lot. And I know that at the public hearing that we had prior to this, there were some comments regarding the parking issues that was there with just the middle school, and that the grassy area did come up at that time as becoming a parking.
I did include the minutes from that meeting in your packet so that you have those?
I did. So I know that the neighborhood, I'm surprised that nobody has made any comments, but?
Well, I wonder if, because there is no designated parking now, if it was designated as parking and it was marked off, if that would essentially solve the concerns that the community members had?
Could be out on his peak forum, though, so.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, none of them made any comments.
No.
There are some public here tonight, I don't know if they're here for this issue or not.
There will be a chance for that.
Steve, they plan on using the old parking lot there by the gym?
Yeah, they're currently utilizing that now.
How many spots are there?
If I remember right, there's 25 or 26, and that's where they got the 50 student limitation, yep.
That doesn't count for faculty or anything?
No. The code just specifies parking by student count, no other requirement.
Interesting.
It's the same way with all of our schools, for instance. Sherman School is expanding, and it's by student count, and we made sure they had the required off-street parking over at Sherman for the new Head Start program, similar situation.
Two kindergartners drive to school.
Big wheel.
Fair question.
I just have a couple of questions for the applicant, so.
We'll be coming up to that.
So I'm, I'm unpause.
Anybody else have any questions for Steve?
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. Next, here comments from the applicant, if there are any.
Mayor and Council, good evening. I'm Jeff Kempa, representing Calvary University. If, before questions, if I could add a few things?
Definitely.
One clarification, as we understand it by city code, our occupancy of the building, not just student count, but occupancy of the building is limited by the parking spaces. So that student count, faculty, staff, anything like that is also affected. It's not just the student count. So right now, the building occupancy is limited to 50 people, and that is delineated in the packet that we gave you. Beyond increasing for student access, our intention, you know, to move forward in the future is to continue to have this facility available for community use, community events and some things, potential utilization of the auditorium and gym, and that is also affected by the limitations on the parking currently. Our understanding of past community concern over parking involved the overflow away from the facility down into the neighborhoods, so our intention with this application request is to centralize that around the facility and prevent that overflow down into the neighborhoods and to mitigate that concern of the community. Any other questions?
Oh, so when is your scheduled start academic year?
Our scheduled academic year is actually in, in progress now for the university, but our goal to have students in classroom is in the end of August, which is the traditional start of the fall semester.
Wow, okay.
We go around, year-round cycle.
Okay.
So our goal is to have students on-site at the, at the end of August.
So if we were to approve this, what, would you're striping, like, when would you start striping and doing?
As soon as we could confirm with the city, you know, Steve's team, the actual requirements, you know, of material and sizing, spacing, things like that, and then get, you know, contractor in sight, on-site to do that. So we would move as quickly as possible, working with Steve's team to get there.
Cool.
Any other questions, Mr. Kempa?
Thank you.
Next to public comments, is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue? Come up to the?
I'd say give them that section right in front of the podium.
Yes, please.
Yeah, if you could sign in, there's a sheet right next to the podium there, and with your name and address.
I'd say allow them the street right there in front of the middle school. Because for years, when the middle school was there, that road was closed off. Everybody around in Fort Morgan and around town has always gone completely around the block instead of going down that middle street. So closing it off again is not going to be a problem. It's going to be a solution. That gets them out of the neighborhood and right there in front of the school, where they're going to be able to keep everything centralized. Because if you don't allow them that section, the same problem is going to happen every time there was a sporting event or concert, people start parking in front of residents' homes, and it spreads out back onto the neighborhood. By closing that street off again, which was, the middle school was there, what, 20-plus years, it was closed off. Closing it off again is going to solve the problem and keep the neighborhood from having a lot of traffic going through it. So I'd say allow them to do that, to allow them the access.
But I don't believe that they're, achieve the amount of parking places they need with just that street.
It's a start. That gets them started, and then they can look at the solution for the field. That field will give them the extra parking they need it, because all that is right now is a field. But that gives them a solution to start looking into what it's going to cost to make that field a parking lot. But that strip in front of the school is a start to the parking solution. Give them somewhere to start, and they can expand on it. Because if we don't do that, we're going to have the same problem, we start having, before the middle school closed. Everything's rolling out in the neighborhood. We don't need that anymore. We're looking for solutions, not problems. So I say let them have it. That would be their start of their solution.
Just, you're speaking just Dual Street?
Just right there in front of the middle school. By allowing them to close that off again and make that a parking lot, that's starting the solution in the right direction.
They're, they're also asking for a couple other streets to have that on?
On one side, up against the building.
How do you feel about that?
That's fine, it's up against the building. That's where the teachers were parking anyway. Because in the school year, that's where the teachers parked. They parked in that back small parking lot by the gym, and they parked along the side of the streets around the school. That's not changing. But if you don't allow them to have that dual section in front of the school, they're going to start going to start parking in front of your house, my house, or anybody else's house, because they're going to look for someplace to park. Why create a problem when there's a solution right there that has been closed for years? Because for years, they had two bars across that street. The buses didn't even go down it. That's what allowed the kids to go in and out of the building and cross the field. Close it back down, let them use it for a parking lot. Close one side off, open one side up, that way they have emergency access, they have the parking they need, and it doesn't interfere with the homes.
Well, their parking recommendation is that they keep the street open and yet still have room to park on both sides of that street.
I don't see enough room having diagonal parking on both sides. I say close one end off, but leave one end open, just like what it's always been. I say let them have it.
And then, you're okay with diagonal parking all the way, the rest of the way around the school on Beaver and...
Well, the teachers parked up against the curb around the school all year round. They're going to be doing the exact same thing. They're parking on the curbside of the building. They're not parking in front of homes, they're not parking at the apartment complex across the street. They're parking up against the building, which is what the staff was doing anyway. Because that back parking lot filled up real quick, then the staff started parking around the building, except for one area on the south side that allowed for pickup and drop off of students. If we allow them to be able to have that same access that the staff had when the middle school was there, and give them that street in front of the school for parking, it would give them a solution and start them in the right direction for coming up with a bigger solution, which would probably be the field across, built from the building. Turn that into a parking lot, and everybody parks inside the perimeter of the property and not out on the street. But that strip is going to be the start for the solution instead of creating a bigger problem.
Okay, but what's before us, I want you to understand, is there's 33 parking places on south side of Beaver Street. There is 11 on the other block of Beaver Street, the south side of that. Then there are, is parking on both sides of Dual Street, which is the one that was closed off.
Yeah.
And maintaining that. There is another 11 diagonal spaces on Kiowa Street, down right where the field is at, and another 33 along, across from those apartments along there. Maple Street is the ones that they're, they have no diagonal parking, it's the parking lot. You're fine with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I know what I went through with my kids who were going to that middle school every time they had a concert. If I didn't get there early enough, we were walking. And I don't want to see this college have that same problem with their students parking in front of homeowners' homes.
So you're in favor of this variance?
Yes, I am. I say we should let them have it. It's a start to a solution.
Very good.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Did you have something?
I didn't come here on this issue, but the numbers you just gave...
Could you sign in, please?
I was just doing a little math, and if there's 66, 77, 88, so you've got 88 spaces around there that you just mentioned, and then if you're going up and down dual, what is that, 300 feet? If you divide that by eight, that's not even 40 spaces on each side, so that's 80 and the 88, and you're shooting for 300, you're going to have to come up with another 100 spaces somewhere. But I'm not here about that.
Well, I believe that it's one space per two students, correct?
Yeah.
So they're shooting for 150.
Yeah.
We're not looking at this plan for 300 parking spaces, we're looking for 300 students.
Excuse me, sir, you're going to need to come to the podium.
If you're going to address that, you got to come up here if you would, please. Is there any other public comment?
I live a half a block away.
Microphone.
Sorry. I thought you could hear me always. I live a half a block away from the middle school, the old middle school, where the university is coming in. I don't not welcome them here. I do not welcome the thought that if they don't have enough parking, the way they propose, that they'll be parking in front of my house. I have two spots in front of my house that allow for me and possibly a guest, a daughter or son-in-law or whoever wants to come visit. If they do not have enough room at the school, they're going to be parking up and down my street. Now, I know you suggested that they open up Dual Street, that they give them Dual Street. They gave them Dual Street once, it was not theirs to give away. That's a public street. There is a parking lot capability across the street from the school where the old Baker Elementary School used to be, that could house a possibility of maybe 200 cars in that lot, if it's designed properly. I suggest that they take their money, they build their lot, the same as Safeway had to build their lot, the same as Walmart had to build their lot, the same as the schools, other schools are required to build lots. I don't know why the citizens have to pay for them, for their parking. They have capability to park cars if they utilize it. I think investigation needs to be made as to how they can best do that. I, for one, am not willing to pay for their parking, and I sure as heck don't want Dual Street closed again. It was closed for too long for unnecessary use. Thank you.
Just for clarification, the citizens won't be paying for this, the striping, and
I understand that.
That will be done by the college.
I understand that.
So...
But we paid for a lot of years with the giving up Dual Street as it was. We shouldn't have to give it up again.
The recommendation does not close Dual Street, though. It is parking on both sides.
It's a suggestion that we give it back to them.
Thank you. Your comment, Dan. Is there anybody else wishes to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I would ask City Clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted by the clerk's office prior to the hearing.
None were received.
None? Council discussion, are there any questions or discussion for council?
I'm wondering if they grow to the, if this is allowed, and it grows to the point where traffic does, they fill up the traffic that the variance allows, and then they start to bleed into the neighborhood. What is the process, what's going to happen to call them on it and ensure that they take care of the students that they have, I guess?
I believe that would be constituted by the student enrollment.
I mean, is the, if there's an issue, does the, I mean, who's the... I mean, we're obviously the authority, but I mean, how do we, do we bring it back to council, and do we, you know, bring the hammer down and say, you know, force them to tell us what their enrollment is so that we can then say, you're exceeding what the variance allows, and you're causing a problem? I mean, at what point in the future, if there is a problem, would we be able to, as a council, do something about it?
Well, I'm not sure I can answer that question. This variance tonight purports to create 150-some spaces that allows the, and it is by student count according to the code, it's one space per two students. Allows them to double that number of parking spaces and allows them to have that number of students in that facility.
So...
How we deal with that, should it increase, I don't know if that's, again, another request for variance before this body, to create additional on-street parking that satisfies the off-street parking requirements, but they will be limited at this point to the number of on-street parking stalls that they delineate, and that's how many students they will be allowed to have according to the code. One space allows two students. So I don't know if, again, if that comes back to this body or if we enforce the code at that point.
Code would be enforced.
Or they could request another variance.
Steve, would it be possible to place another condition on the variance, that if their enrollment exceeded a certain threshold, that they'd have to come back for a further variance or something like that?
Well, if I could interject, ultimately, the code already provides that, so it wouldn't be necessary to do that in a variance. To your point, if their enrollment exceeds the 300 or whatever that number ends up being based off the number of spaces they can accommodate, we would enforce the code and basically tell them, you're in violation of our building code, which requires XYZ to be our zoning code.
Yeah, zoning code.
And if they choose not to, we do have enforcement authority. If the problem is they have parking spaces for 150 cars, but there's 300 cars that show up, and those 300 cars park somewhere, there's other opportunities that council could consider for streets to have residential-only parking, or, you know, there's a lot of, this isn't an issue that's unique to Fort Morgan, and there's a lot of creative ways we could look at addressing this. I'm thinking of my own undergrad as an example of where we were not allowed to park as students or we would get towed. That is an option in the future that the city could consider. Once you grant a variance, though, it is a property right, and unless they're violating that, we need to leave it alone at that point.
And again, what we have is a rough plan to create roughly 150-some spaces. What it actually can accommodate, once we delineate those, will dictate how many students they are allowed to have at that point.
Mr. Kampa, I have a question for you. What is your plans for the grass area to the east of the middle school? If you were to have the parking spaces on Dual Street, both sides, and utilize that grass area for a parking lot, that would get you pretty close in the event that you exceeded the 300 spaces that you were, or 300-student limitation that you would have for the 150 spaces. At that time, you would be able to have ability for expansion by coming back for, to get the on-street diagonal parking. I guess my question is, what are your...
All right. So two things. Before I get to that, the first one is I'd like, might have to go back with staff to confirm, our understanding by building code is that building occupancy is what's limited by the parking spaces, not just student enrollment. So if there's a detail there that we need to go back and clarify, full building occupancy, not just student enrollment, so we make sure we're all on the same page there, and we may have to come back with staff just to clarify that. But regarding the field to the east of Dual Street, our desire and intention is to have that available for future development. So if we use that up for parking now, that limits the opportunity, you know, Steve mentioned, you know, potential housing, it's kind of the first on our list to explore as we can for housing there on the field. So we, our preference would not to be start there for parking and then flow into the street. Our preference would, our request is to deal with the street for parking to give us the freedom to consider utilizing that space for future development. So does that answer your question about why we would not be pursuing parking on that field?
It answered my question, but... I mean, if it is a parking lot, there still is time down the road that you could utilize that as a, you're going to have to have parking for a living structure anyway.
So our request to the city involves allowing the building occupancy to change from 50, you know, relatively immediately, to increase that relatively immediately, to give time to decide and look at the best, you know, actually do some research and get projections on development of the field, costs, things like that, watch our growth a bit to see which is needed more, you know, more parking or housing-type space or other space, which we lose that a bit if we turn that into parking or turn that into partial parking now. Because then also, if we do build or do develop on that site, it will, as Steve said earlier, it will need its own parking. So if we use that, you know, we'd be kind of tapping it twice for parking and then have to come back to revisit what we're visiting tonight for potential variance for on-street.
And when you say residential, you're talking student housing?
Student, potentially faculty, staff, student, but primarily first of all, student.
How far in the future are you looking at for that?
For that, I don't have an answer for you. We have a...
Still a long shot, huh?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I don't, I mean, it's not like six months, you know, but I can't commit beyond that, I'm sorry.
Thanks. Anybody else have any questions? Is there any further discussion of council?
So I think having the diagonal striping will be amazing around the space because you can squeeze in a lot more cars when it's clearly marked. So I do think that's going to be beneficial for the area. I do, any public events, there's going to be spell over, even when we have these additional ones that are marked. So I really do want council to kind of think about the idea of having signage about not parking in some of these areas that are right around the school. While I know when we would go to the middle school, we'd park anywhere we could, you know, in front of houses for sure, so I think to protect the residents around the area would be something we could add, but I do think, I would like to see the diagonal striping. But as far as long-term, I do think that field, since we are locked into this historical space, we do have to consider how far out, you know, to use that field for parking, but it's obviously up to the facility, but I don't see them being able to grow without using some of that space for parking.
Does anybody know how long that block is?
They've got 435.
Excuse me, sir, if you're going to speak to the council, you'll need to speak into the microphone.
I was just saying that if that is 400 feet, that's at eight feet per car, that's just, on each end, there's going to be some space not used, so that's less than 50 feet, 50 cars up and down each side of Dual. I was just saying that.
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Is there any other comments from council?
Mayor, I did want to go over those three recommendations on the variance. I don't know if we go over that when we talk with Jason at the end, but those three recommendations to amend it.
Did you have questions about the conditions that were suggested?
Yes. Is now a good time, Jason, or?
Sure.
Okay. So, so the city staff that recommended these conditions, was that, you know, is it a group with you and Steve or Planning Commission?
Who makes those recommendations?
Yeah.
Is the Planning Department in their review.
And for the second one, I did have a question about just safety along, sorry, got to go back to the right map. So if I parked on the far side, if I was walking across, was, yeah, how would it be safe for me to cross there? On, so if I parked on the east side of Dual, what would be there for me to protect me as a pedestrian?
Walking through the middle of Dual Street would be same as walking across to any other street.
So, yeah, do they...
I'm not sure that there was any plans for crosswalks otherwise, but as a pedestrian, you'd have to yield to any traffic in the roadway.
Absolutely.
And it's always recommended to cross the corners, not in the middle of the street.
I'm looking at, yeah, just kind of what exists right now, but I just can't tell what, what would be there for, for safety. I'll look both ways, Jason. Did, could you answer, could you come down in?
There's a sidewalk on each end, and so...
I just haven't been over there in a while, so I can't remember what's already existing.
Well, I mean, there's, I guess, I think that's...
Well, I mean, there's, I guess, I think that's a good point. I mean, there should be some crosswalks. You're gonna have increased traffic, you're gonna have increased cars, there ought to be some safe, you know, something clearly marked for pedestrian travel across the street in addition to the striping.
So that's something we can certainly look into, Steve and the team, as far as an extra crosswalk perhaps in the middle, not just at the north and south corners. Signage is part of that responsible, we'd have in marking and delineating that, you know, extra pedestrian crossing signs or things like that. We would certainly work with Steve and see in the final what is the best or the appropriate way to alert traffic, but also alert the pedestrians that would be parking and crossing.
If you put a crosswalk in the middle, you're gonna lose some of your parking spaces.
We would. But safety trumps parking spaces, so.
Well, I was just thinking if it's labeling for people so that they do it. Although I know at the high school, we got a couple of crosswalks, and they still walk across right in between them.
Thank you.
Well, I guess from my perspective, I would like to see utilization of part of that park, of the grassy area where you would have parking for your residential utilized up front. That could always be dropped back and scaled to whatever your needs are for your building, and utilize Dual Street, both sides, for your parking as well, and use the rest of the streets at a later date in the event you would need additional parking. I guess that would be my two cents. If there's no other discussion, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Your Honor, move to close this public hearing.
Second.
A motion by Doug Sashow, a second by Dan Marler, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Myers?
All right. So, to start off, I'll try to make sure I'm as concise as possible. The factors that you're looking at are in the packet that's been provided to you, and that's the analysis that you should base this off of, if this meets those criteria. You've got a few options. You can approve as presented, you can approve with the conditions that's, staff presented those three, which were provided in the packet. Councilman, or Councilmember Howe had a potential fourth condition, which would be to add an additional crosswalk if necessary. The other option, you can grant in part, similar to what the mayor was suggesting, allowing on one street but not the others, or you can deny. So there's a myriad of options. Good luck.
Thanks.
I would entertain a resolution.
I'm just rereading through the seven conditions, Mayor.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution approving case 18 day 005 VA for a variance to allow available on-street parking to count for the required off-street parking as required in our municipal code with the following conditions: that the variance would expire if Calvary University should decide to sell the property or cease to operate the facility as a college, the diagonal parking spaces meet all code requirements, and that Calvary University is responsible to delineate the parking stalls with materials in a manner acceptable to the city.
Second.
A resolution by Kevin Lindell and a second by Dan Marler. Vote by roll call.
The resolution carries unanimously?
I, I was just thinking along what you're doing and would offer to Steve that, I would guess you'd be to look into it, but maybe the thing to do, to have the best idea for safety would be to put like school zone, maybe speed limit signs on each side of Dual that slows it to 20. Like I said, I mean, that's one reason we don't hit high school kids, is because it's a school zone and everybody slows down when they're jaywalking there, so.
And Tim's car is parked there.
What's that?
And Tim Malone's car is parked there.
Well, that helps slow them down, too. It is the slow speed that keeps us from having kids being hit, I think.
Okay. Thank you. Next is presentation of possible action on a resolution ratifying emergency expenditures related to the flooding of the library. Mr. Hamer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As some of you are aware, back in December, we had a slight flood in the children's library, the basement floor of the library. I'll just kind of briefly try to go through the process, but immediately Service Master was called in. They started cleanup work. Once the water was removed, we had about a four-foot section of sheet rock that was ruined on a couple of the walls. Well, when inspecting the walls for mold, we actually found asbestos in the mud that was used on the sheet rock. So it now became an asbestos abatement cleanup. Next step was working on bids for that. We worked with Sursa and Craig at Sursa and ended up moving into a process with Buchanan Construction to clean up the asbestos problem. Once that was completed, we went into getting bids to replace the sheet rock, fix the tape and texture and painting, carpet. Anyways, we are finally done. So in your packet, you've got a list and a breakdown of the different vendors that ended up being used. The total cost of the emergency expenditures was around $96,000. I believe our deductibles, $25,000, which we are responsible for, and insurance should cover around $71,000. Hopefully, tonight, you can pass a resolution ratifying, is that what it's called, the mayor's approval to repair the library. So, thank you.
So we're just, basically the way you understand it, and I got kind of confused about this, we're basically ratifying $25,000 because it covered the rest of it?
No, the expenditure would be the entire amount. It's just where the funding source comes from.
Yeah, so we paid all the bills out of the, is it the property casualty deductible account, and then there's a claim with Sursa, and my understanding is they'll be reimbursing us a certain amount.
So hypothetically, if we dis, if we do not approve this, who pays for it?
Good question.
Oh, boy, I need a raise.
Yeah, if I could venture to add that we likely wind up in litigation with the contractors, and the attorney's fees might be more than what this expenditure is.
One thing, I don't know if I could add right now, but I just wanted to give a big thanks to a lot of different departments helped to try to get this library put back together. I mean, Brent and his guys, Steve Sampson in the Rec Department helped to move furniture and cleanup. It really was a group effort, Susan, helping organize us so that we were on track to do what we needed to do with the paperwork. So, a big shout-out to everybody in the city for helping.
I have a question about process. There have been a few emergency expenditures since I've been on council, and it seems like it comes back to us long after the event. Can someone explain why, what is the process? Why does it take so long for that to be ratified? I mean, what's going?
We wait to bring it back to the council until the entire project is completed and all the final bills are in. So we don't, you know, the mayor gives us authorization to go ahead and make the repair or do what needs to be done in the case of the emergency, but we don't want to bring it to the council several times and have, you know, like change orders or add-ons. So we wait until every, and that's, I just got the last bills last week.
Right. We literally just finished carpeting the offices. We, we were able to get the main library open, I think it was June 1st, but two of the offices down there and the hallway by the elevator and the stairs were still not done. They are now done. We got the final invoice probably a week and a half ago.
Thank you. And to that point, and this is a good example, the original scope of this was considered small until we found asbestos.
Yeah.
So even guesstimating what this might have cost completely changed once that happened, which you don't know that until we're already into it.
I would entertain a resolution unless there's any other questions.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to ratify the emergency expenditures approved by Ron Shayer, the mayor, with the following vendors listed in our packet.
Second. I'm just signing for them. I'm not paying for them. Vote by roll call?
That resolution carries unanimously?
We refuse to authorize it, and then you may be paying for them.
Something about a blood and a turnip. Next is discussion and direction on engineering estimates compared to the budgeted funds for installation of streets in Center Point Plaza Development. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Glennmeyer, and Mr. Nation.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll let Steve take it in just a second. Center Point Plaza, I just, when we purchased, it was formerly known as the Hundred Acre Wood for a while. We estimated how much it would cost to put roads in there, and as it turns out, Steve just got the engineer's estimates in it. They were much higher, so we're gonna need to ask for additional funding. The engineer's estimates are not bids, so it's possible the bids would come in lower. We're not sure the exact amount at this point, so that's why this isn't really down for action at this point. But just to remind the council, the development of Center Point was the number three priority of the council in terms of budget for next year. So we'll be looking to complete the, the street layout in their next, in next year's budget. This is something that has to do with the 2018 budget, where we're gonna need to pull out of reserves. And Steve, can I explain that?
No, I think John did a great job. So, yeah, we estimated this, and this number was in the budget when I started here, $2.5 million. You can see I included the engineer's estimate in your packet. To build the sections that are most critical for development currently, and we do have a lot that has been sold that needs access, would be Saunders, north of, or south of Platt Avenue to West Beaver, and then Beaver over to Linda. Removing the roundabout and doing just that L, if you will, is right at $3.8 million by the estimate. That does include contingency. And again, as John mentioned, this is not a bid. This is certainly an engineer's estimate. We hope our engineers are the high bidder when it comes to bidding projects, and would certainly hope to be way under the $3.8 million estimated. But we're asking that the budgeted monies be increased from 2.5 to 3.8, should we need those additional funds as estimated. This would come out of reserve. I can also say that Sol Nociente that we talked about tonight, they did pay the city $350,000 to help construct part of Beaver Avenue, so we do have that in reserves to help offset some of the increase. And then, of course, the sale of the lots is to help pay for improvements as well, and we do have some monies from the sale of the first lot. And any lots we continue to sell and see developed, we would realize those profits to help pay for these improvements as well. We'd have to answer any questions.
On the, we don't know what the amount might be. That's why this isn't down for action. We're not asking tonight for you to approve a dollar amount. But the discussion and direction part, there was talk of building one of the roads, building Saunders down to kind of a circle that exists at Education Avenue, at the end of Education Avenue by the new middle school, or building that just straight through to Railroad and not doing Beaver. So, you know, I guess what we need from the council is your buy-in to do it right the first time, take money out of reserves and build that, at least that L, including Beaver and Linda, rather than come back next year and try and, you know, add on to that. It would make the property, I think, appear better planned and developed for potential buyers.
And we already have property sold in there.
We do have one lot sold, located at Platt Avenue and what would be Saunders Extended South. And that is where most of the lots have been sort of split off. There's another lot that would be to the east of Saunders Extended, also on Platt Avenue, right there on the corner. So this would make that readily available for development. And then we see those lots really along Platt and along Beavers being the highest and best of that subdivision currently. So building this L would create that opportunity to have those developed first.
So when we increase the budget amount, well, that'll take place when we're budgeting for 2019, or what's the, I lost the timeline for that.
It would be, come out of reserves for this year, for 2018. But I guess what we're looking for in terms of direction is to bid it as completing this L, rather than doing half of it or less.
Yeah, the intent would be to bid this out this year. Should we get direction tonight, the engineer will finalize the plans and get ready to go to bid within a few weeks. They're very close. They just needed to know what direction to finalize a bid set so that we could get it out on the street for bid. We would intend to construct as much of this as we can yet this construction season, if not all of it.
Well, I'm always in favor of doing Ls, so.
And to your question as far as the budget's concerned, once the project is bid and once we have those numbers and the project's completed, if it goes over budget, which is anticipated, we'll come back with a budget amendment, which typically we try to do towards the end of the budget year. So we're not doing that multiple times over and over.
How are you feeling, Jeannie? Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I feel like, yeah, I'm, I think it's really important to follow through with this project and make it exceptional, so.
Is this gonna increase the cost of the lots? As I know, when we've had economic incentive discussions and stuff, we've kind of been estimating the value of the lots in regards to incentives. So does this change that equation?
I certainly think it could. That's certainly the prerogative of this body, certainly. But, yeah, I mean, we'll have costs of infrastructure for water, sewer, roads, stormwater ponds, stormwater piping, all of that adds to the value of the lot, for sure.
Well, I, I think we still need to move forward with it.
I agree.
It'd be a shame to have the capital outlay that we did in purchasing the acreage and everything, and then not do everything that we can to lead to development of, then, I mean, that's, the reason it was purchased was for development. So I think that having access from two points would be something that makes that many more lots appealing and everything, so.
Two points to a Center Point.
Yeah.
So I guess you have your direction.
Very good.
It's pretty much unanimous, so. Thanks, Steve.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on ordinance number 1216, amending Chapter 11 of the Fort Morgan Municipal Code concerning park hours. Once again, this is a public hearing, and the same rules will apply as previously stated. First is the issue of legal notice. Mrs. Dunn, was the hearing properly noticed?
A legal notice of this public hearing and the full text of the ordinance, under consideration, appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on June 21st.
Presentation of the ordinance, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the ordinance we heard at the last meeting on first reading. It's unchanged since then. It basically- It basically imposes hours of operation on all city parks from 11, or 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. They would be closed from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM. And as I said, it was approved on first reading at our last meeting and is the same ordinance as before.
Any questions? Next, we'll hear public comments. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this issue?
Somehow, I'm probably representing 23 families that are down there. This morning at dawn, there were 23 vehicles parked camping there. She's there, I'm there. Basically, the situation is, five years ago, I blew my Aorta. They put me on social security. I get $750 a month. The average apartment, I've got a list, they start at $500, $600. You can't afford to get an apartment, so you're kind of trapped in this limbo. You've got to live, but there's no place for you to live. So the park has been quite beneficial. In her situation, she just got a job at Cargill. There's a family right across from me that, the wife works at Cargill. They're just trying to get together the money to get into housing. As you move on down the line, there's a guy that works at United Cannabis. He's in charge of growing something like 300,000 hemp plants up by Wiggins or something. And the guy across from him works for him. Everybody's just basically trying to get a start. And for me, I have to have an oxygen machine and a CPAP machine. So even if I have to go somewhere else, I've got to have electricity at night. I have an RV. Frankly, it's too hot, so I use a tent because I get overheated really easy. The doctor told me five years ago, or six years ago, that I had five years to live, so I'm just looking for a place to die. You know, it doesn't matter to me, long-term, you guys can do whatever you want. Short-term, I'm, you know, my life, my life's done. But a lot of people are counting on that park.
Oh, and I thought I'd mention Officer Cronin, Chief Cronin, I believe, the other day, Thursday night. Staggering across the green area was a girl carrying another girl, two high school girls. One of them was obviously way too drunk or overdosed or something. And I told her to sit down on the curb until I could find my phone. So I went to look for my phone and I couldn't find it. And luckily, Chief Cronin had stopped. And because he was there and we were there, we probably saved some high school kid's life. And if we weren't there, I don't know what would have happened.
Anybody else wishes to speak? Come to the podium and sign in.
I could have done it if you wouldn't start crying. The park's been a blessing for me. I fell on hard times, was wandering around Denver. Had people taking advantage of me rather than helping me out. Came to Fort Morgan because a friend of my brother's was here and he was going to help. And he didn't. And so basically, I was trapped with no communication, no ability, walking back and forth, pretending like I had a life and trying to find a job. And, you know, it was, it was not fun. And I thought when the landlord at the place I was staying told me to go over to the park, I was like, oh, my God. And it's the safest I've felt in five months. People there actually helped me, helped me get a job, provided my transportation. I just, I can't tell you what a blessing it is. I would be sorry if you took that away because there might be problems that you see associated with it that cause you alarm. But they're not the people that are camping. If you were to come there at 11 o'clock at night, it's shut down. Everybody's asleep. They got things that they need to do tomorrow. I don't know where I would be if it hadn't happened. But in three weeks, they turned around a story that's been horrible for the last five months. I suggest that you keep camping open.
I understand wanting to close the park during certain time hours. Two weeks ago, we had a frisbee tournament at the park and half the people that were camping at that park were people attending that tournament. You close the park down, you're also closing down business. People at that park that were here for that tournament spent money in town, spent money at that tournament, which also got put back into the town. Closing the park between 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM is a short-term solution that creates more problems. You do that, now we've got to figure out where's the homeless going to go. Fort Morgan's got a lot of land. If they're worried about the homeless being at the park, donate a section of that land for the homeless with stipulations that while they're on that land, they help the city of Fort Morgan maintain the city of Fort Morgan. Part of you that's staying there, you come out with us and help us keep our city streets clean. People who stay at the park, issue them permits. $5 for tents, $10 for non-power, $20 for power. That way, it offsets the power that they're using. And if they don't have that permit, the easiest way to solve that problem is a $100 fine, right up front. Somebody gets that fine for not having the permit, they're going to think twice about camping without the permit. Most campgrounds all over the United States charge $35 to $75 a night. That's without power, water, or anything else. But if you do $5 for tents, $10 for camping without power, and $20 for camping with power, that helps offset the city costs on the power that's being used at the park while they're down there. I know the officers have a hard time as it is with their job at night. They're quite busy. But if we step up the patrols down there, they'll help offset the problems going on down there. Because I've been out at that park all hours of the day and night, and I've not seen an officer one come through unless there's an emergency. And I'm not saying it's their fault. They're busy. I know they're busy. I listened to it all night long. They are probably busier than most places. And I feel sorry for the officers because they are, they were shorthanded until tonight. I understand it. But if we assign one person to take care of that camping area, like a curator, that issues the permits, that goes out there every day and walks and makes sure that permit is displayed up on the dash. If it's not displayed up on the dash or on the window, then it's automatic fine and you're asked to leave right then and there. As far as the homeless, I understand they're homeless. But most of these homeless are looking for jobs. There's an old saying, "When you scratch my back, I scratch your back." If Fort Morgan don't take the section of town where the homeless can stay and they help the city maintain the city streets, they're, each other's helping each other. They're not just being homeless, being in the park, training problems. Now they have a purpose. Their purpose is to make sure they get a better life. And Fort Morgan is helping them get that better life at the same time. We have travelers that come down the highway every single night. That's money coming into town. If that campground is left open, they'll stop there at that campground because it's well-known throughout the internet that their campground's there. Brush is having the same issue. They're getting ready to close theirs, too. But that's revenue coming into town because they camp there and they come to our restaurants. We don't want to push away business. We want the business. That's how we expand and grow. That's how we keep our coffers topped off. Closing the park is not the solution. That's a problem. You close that off, you're closing off some revenue. And we don't want to lose any revenue. That's not the purpose for all of this. The purpose is to make money any way we can. That campground can make us money. And if that campground's not good enough, why doesn't Fort Morgan, across the river, the section that Fort Morgan owns, turn that into a campground that's regulated by one person? And set that up for campground? So they have power and water and they charge it for it. That way, when we do have events like we had with the frisbee tournament, we have places for these people to stay because they come down in motorhomes, vans, trucks. They don't go to hotels. They stay at the park. That way, they can get to practicing in before their tournaments. That money, while they're there, they go to the stores around the, out of the park, Mavericks, McDonald's, Taco Bell for meals. That's putting money in our town. You close that campground down, you're losing that money. That's not what we want to do. Whole idea for a town to grow is make money any way we can, and that campground's one of them. That's a revenue. I understand people say, well, let us stay for free. I don't know any campground in town, other than here in Brush, that allow you to stay for free. I'm sorry, there's nothing for free. You want to stay there, then you help keep the park maintained. So we're not having to spend so much money on people maintaining the park. These people that are staying there help maintain that park. They put pride into it. That way, you offset costs. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Two minutes.
Just basically, social security is $750 a month. $20 a night times 30 nights is 600 bucks. That leaves you with 150 a month to live on. It's just unrealistic. Also, 23 families, if they just have one check, that's $17,000 a month coming into this town, which wouldn't be coming in the other way. All I can say is, if there's two people in a family, whatever, that's double that. That's $35,000 a month. All I can say is, there's a lot of people that need it.
Well, I think the point behind this is not to cause any issues with the homeless. You discuss revenue. Our parks guys spend a phenomenal amount of time picking up and cleaning up around the park during the, during the days. This is my three minutes, please. So that's the main issue behind there. You just heard that we had $97,000 worth of damage to our library, which is connected to City Park. That was due to a hose bib being turned on, run down the stairwell, and flooded the basement. That's the reason for this ordinance is to allow our officers the opportunity, if they are patrolling the parks, they have the ability to approach and address issues in there to keep things in line in our, in our parks. And that's what this is intended to do. It has nothing with.
Compliance for a designated campground, too, if you don't mean.
And that's the other issue. We also have, it's not designated as a campground. And I know that there is some areas that we have compliance issues on. If you.
It's under the Colorado Department of Health, has strict regulations as to what's required for minimum requirements for campgrounds.
But you have to have designated sites. I know there was a few other aspects that you had mentioned, but that's what this is intended to. Two minutes.
The trash. That is, it's not the campers that are creating the trash. It's the high schoolers that cruise the park all night long. They park over to do their drug deals over by the campers. They leave trash on the lawn. They leave trash over where they park. My suggestion would be throw the actual book at them. I believe the rule is that if you're within 1,000 yards of a school or playground, that you get a minimum of eight years for drug dealing. I say you go ahead and charge some of those high schoolers and give them eight years.
Okay. Is there anybody else wishes to speak on this? To sign in, please.
Mayor, council, citizens. So I just want to start off saying that Riverside Park is my favorite park in town. It is by far the most beautiful one we have. The stuff we can do there is phenomenal. And it's a gem in northeastern Colorado with the camping we can do. Well, not camping, but the disc golf, the hiking, the pool, the playground, and just the sightseeing you can do along the river and everything else there. And it's beautiful. It's wonderful. And it's hands down my favorite park in town. However, right now, due to where the camping is occurring, and I understand that you guys have fallen on hard times, this is a very sensitive issue. And just, this is not an easy issue. And there definitely needs to be another solution for this, maybe setting something up for these people to go, you know, to where you guys can get back on your feet, not looking for a hand out, but a hand up. And I definitely can appreciate that. But my wife does not feel comfortable taking my three small children to the park there just to where that stuff is at. And it's, and I mean, honestly, as an educator, it's a big deal. I mean, as an educator, I have to pass certain tests, certain background checks, everything I got to be close to children, okay? And these people, nothing against you guys, just, I don't know you guys. You know what I mean? And I'm very sensitive with my children. You know what I mean? I don't know who you are and, and, you know, it's a little scary. You know what I mean?
I don't know who you are.
So I, I know, right? But it's just kind of a thing where it's a little bit concerning having that site right across the street where children play, where baseball's happening, just down the street there, and a pool right there. You know what I mean? So I would definitely say at the very minimum, a different location within the park if that's going to be allowed to continue. I also understand, from my understanding, that camping has taken place. I mean, I'm a lifelong resident here and I continue to, I want to stay here forever. But I also understood that camping that was taking place in the park was limited to five to seven days, something like that. And it was also based on, I think, donation to kind of offset the cost, which is fine. But I don't necessarily think that's happening now. I've driven by there a lot for my kids' baseball games and the grass next to some of the tents, which, fair enough, I wouldn't want someone mowing next to my tent if I was camping down there. It's a little long, and I think it's a little bit longer than five to seven days. I don't know what the, what is the policy on the camping? Is there a time?
There is a time limit on there, but I, I think it's five days and any 30 days.
Five days within a 30-day period? Okay, so, I mean, if, if that is an issue as far as why you guys want to close the parks down, that's a different issue and I kind of feel like we're, the, the big issue here is how long people are staying down there, which I think is a legitimate concern in who's staying down there. I mean, there's no way to regulate who's down there as of right now, what their business is, whatever. I definitely think that's a whole nother issue that needs to be dealt with. And that's not what we're looking at right now, which is slightly unfortunate because I kind of feel like we're trying to tackle that issue by doing it a different way, if that makes sense. And I don't necessarily blame anyone for that because this is a really hard issue.
Actually, we're not trying to circumvent and solve one problem over another. The reason for this ordinance was that there is trash in the park every morning that takes city staff hours to clean up. The area where the park, or where the tent camping has been taking place, we had to completely clear that out for a period of a couple of months last year because the grass was dying. Sprinkler heads were being taken off or turned off or plugged up. And there's vandalism and other issues down at the park that take place primarily at night. And I, you know, there's no way of telling who, you know, it may be the teenagers, it may be some of the people who are camping, but it's not a campground. And it keeps being referred to as a campground, but it's a park. And our desire is to get, take care of the problems that occur at night in terms of crime, vandalism, and trash dispersal by closing the parks overnight.
Okay. That answers a lot of my questions, then. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? There's no one else, I would ask city clerk, were there any oral or written comments submitted prior to this public hearing?
None received.
Council discussion for questions. Counsel, discussion for questions or discussion.
I did receive one call in favor of closing the parks at night. But I had a question about the language to be used. I am in favor of special event camping there. If, in the event, they provide the bathroom facilities and the water, does the language as it was proposed allow for the disc golf tournament to happen?
There is some discretion given to the city manager to make that determination.
Under the language that we... That's being proposed for this?
Correct. There's discretion, city manager, to close or open the park based on emergency or other issues, as they feel appropriate. So rather than going through the code and creating an entire special event permitting process, the intent was to leave it flexible so to make that decision.
Okay.
And would the Recreation Department be handling the permitting for that if they were...
That is a very good management question.
Steve, you around?
Well, and ultimately, it would be up to the city manager's office to determine how or what that looks like. Right now, the special event permits are handled by the Rec. Department.
Okay.
Depending on the type and nature of the event, it touches multiple departments, but right now, that's the way it works.
And this is enforced on all parks. The city has a lot of parks in our community. We've redone Optimus Park, Brenda Joy Park. We put in a bicycle skate park, state-of-the-art, put sod in there. The sod was vandalized. We've had gang tagging in there through the night. This is not proprietary to Riverside Park. This is all parks. So, it's an issue and a problem that has compounded and gotten worse over the years. And it's time we have to, we have to address it and do something to address this. So...
And Your Honor, just to add, since Councilmember Marler mentioned receiving a call, we did put this on Polco, and it was about sixty-five, thirty-five in favor of closing the parks at night. So about two to one.
Anybody else on council have any questions or comments?
I received two phone calls that were in favor of closing the parks. But I do think it's going to be a really good tool for safety. I think it's important for our police department to have firm guidelines on what's allowed and what's not allowed in this public space, because it is a public space. And I think it's really important that Jason did the research to show what legally is defined as a park versus what's legally defined as a campground. And we don't meet those requirements, so it's not safe without, yeah, having the right restroom facilities, clean water. So for those kind of basic public health needs for a campground, I think it's really important that we make this recommendation and close the parks.
Can I ask one question, Mr. Mayor? Close the parks, is it a...
Sir, can you please approach the microphone? You have two minutes.
I understand closing the parks. Part of me agrees with it, part of me doesn't, for one reason, one reason only, the homeless. If the city council says, "Yes, we're closing the parks from 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m.," is the city council willing to step up and say, "Okay, now we have another issue that we have to find a solution for, and that's the homeless"? Because just closing the park is not solving the other problem. It's just creating more of a problem for that other problem. We still have to deal with the homeless in this town.
We are very well aware of that. This has nothing to do with the homeless.
But closing the park just created another problem. Now, they're not going to be at the park. Next question is, where are they going to be? They're going to be on private property that people don't know about until they show up. He's underneath the tree. They're going to be behind somebody's house. They're going to just find someplace else to go. That's not solving the problem, that's creating more of a problem. We need to do, as a town, as a council, need to come up with a solution for these homeless people prior to the closing of the parks. Because once you close the park, they got nowhere. And then where are they going to go? They're going to go to your backyard, my backyard, or whoever's backyard that happens to be close by. I don't want somebody camping in my backyard that I don't know. I know the city has spare land around. Is the city willing to donate some of that land for that purpose, prior to closing the parks?
Don't know. It's not part of this public hearing.
Can we make it part of a hearing, though?
Not this one.
I'm not saying tonight, I'm saying in the future.
That I don't know.
How do we go about doing that?
We'll put staff on it, and we'll take a look at it. But that is not part of this public hearing. It is...
I know the public hearing is about closing the park, and I understand that. But that closing of the park is going to create another problem.
Well, it's fixing a couple of them, so...
Yeah, it's going to fix the trash, it's going to fix the graffiti, but it's not going to fix the homeless.
We're done. I allowed... Public comment is over. This was council's, so your two minutes are finished. I appreciate your input. We will have staff take a look at that at that time. But that issue is not part of this hearing. Thank you. Okay. There is no further discussion with council. I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion by Doug Sashow and a second by Dan Marler, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Myers?
All right. Unlike the previous public hearings, where you had a set of listed criteria that you needed to evaluate, the legal standard in this case is whether or not you believe this is in the best interest of the city. If you believe that it is, then you would approve. If you believe that it is not, you would move or make no action, I suppose is an option. And if there's any amendments that need to be made, you can do that as well.
I would entertain a resolution approving on second final reading, ordinance 1216, or denial of it.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the second and final reading of ordinance 1216, amending chapter 11 of our municipal code concerning our park hours and authorization to publish by title only.
Second that. Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Sashow, vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously?
Okay. Next is a presentation and possible action by ordinance on a first reading, establishing the franchise agreement with ALO Communications and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for July 17th. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Your Honor. Jason pretty much negotiated this agreement with ALO, spent a lot less time than he did with Charter on a similar agreement with them. He can tell you about any differences between those agreements. But this would offer a franchise, a cable franchise, to ALO Communications for our fiber optic network.
So to clarify, it's them to be providing video service within the city. So it kind of goes along with the current infrastructure projects that are going on, and this would authorize them to utilize the rights of way to provide video services. Telecommunication services aren't allowed to be franchised under Colorado law. So those are kind of a separate piece. As John mentioned, we spent about two and a half years negotiating with Charter for their agreement. This agreement took about five months. Part of that is because we have to treat both of them the same. So the majority of the Charter agreement became the ALO agreement. There are some benefits added to the city that ALO was willing to provide, which is public access to, or access to basic cable at public facilities, which we try to utilize in emergency situations, so that we can understand what's happening in the rest of the world as we're dealing with an emergency. We don't get the fancy package. We're not going to be watching the Broncos game here at City Hall or anything, but... Everybody's so grim. This is exciting news. Anyways, I've got... If you have any questions, I'm available. The ALO staff wasn't able to make it to today's meeting, but they are planning to attend the second reading.
My question was, and I don't know that you'd be able to answer it. I was going to ask them and everything when it says, if ALO's content costs increase to the point that providing pre-service to public buildings becomes commercially impractical, we understand the city will entertain a request from ALO, do modify the franchise accordance in some numbers and letters. I didn't understand what would happen with that. I mean, what's going to happen that makes all of this engines? We can't provide video to the city?
Well, first off, as a standard, they're not required to provide anything for free. They could take the cost out of our franchise. So the fact that they're willing to provide it for free at this point is a benefit to the city. From their perspective, they've got a company to run, and they've got a fifteen-year agreement that they're looking at. The landscape for providing video service is likely to change over that timeframe. And they wanted to make sure that they're not locked into something that's going to cause problems twelve and a half years down the road, as it were. So that's not their intent to pull the rug out from under us immediately. But they wanted to make sure they have a business to run, and fifteen years is a long time. They'll be looking at that.
Any other questions?
Jason, for this resolution, do we need just what's in... Listed on the agenda or the, all the bold text under the ordinance number?
Whatever's on the agenda is fine.
Okay, is that enough for... That looks good. Oh, you need some... Your Honor, I offer a resolution for this first reading of ordinance 1217 to establish a franchise agreement with ALO Communications and to schedule a public hearing for this ordinance on July 17th.
Second. Have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Kevin Lindell, vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously?
Next is presentation and possible action on a first reading of an ordinance 1218 to place a ballot question regarding a proposed charter change before the city voters in the November election and request to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance for July 17th. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the one we had a lengthy discussion about last meeting, and Jason distilled all that down into one option for ballot language, which hopefully will meet with your approval. That is included in the ordinance, and that is the wording that would appear on the ballot. And I think we kept it as simple as possible and straightforward, and so there could be no confusion about what's being proposed.
I agree. Good job, Jason.
The only thing that I might offer, that at least for consideration, is maybe inserting where it says "from a director" and putting "who reports directly to the city manager", to an appointed official reporting directly to city council. Because I don't know that the populace would know that a director reports to city manager, so that they understand the change.
Read that one by me again.
Where it says, entitled position "from a director to an appointed city official", and it says the appointed city official reports directly to city council. I was thinking we should have "from a director who reports directly to the city manager to an appointed official reporting directly to the city council", because I don't know that people would understand that a director is somebody that is under city manager as far as hierarchy. And that's the big change that we're creating. And so I thought that that would be clearer to the city.
To me, it seems Jason's done a pretty good job from a director to an appointed official, reporting directly to council.
But I don't know that you realize that we're taking him from underneath city manager to... Pardon me?
I do realize. Very much so.
No, I understand. Let me rephrase that. I'm not sure the average citizen reading this would understand that we're taking the position from reporting to city manager to reporting to city council, which is the gist of the thing. The gist isn't going from director to appointed official. It's going from reporting to city manager to reporting to city council.
I would agree. I think most citizens don't understand the structure of how the city officials work. And a few extra words isn't going to hurt anything in this case. I think it would add a little bit more clarity.
I know that...
So what you're looking at is for, from a director reporting to city manager to an appointed official, reporting to council.
Exactly. I just want them to be clear that a director reports to city manager and appointed official reports to city council.
Does counsel feel... Say... Jason, can you...
No, it's over now. I'm just kidding.
There's your answer, Kevin.
Certainly. So whomever chooses to make the motion, if that's the added language you'd like to make, just have that motion with the added language. And we'll make sure that's adjusted before it gets published in full in the paper. And then on second reading, it'll include that as published in full and everything else, so...
Cool. Thanks for your work on that, Jason.
And work, and work.
You just thought you were done. Okay. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution on the first reading of ordinance 1218 to place a ballot question regarding a proposed charter change before city voters in the November election to request a sc... And to request to schedule a public hearing for this ordinance on July 17th.
And if I could clarify, is that with or without the additional language?
With the additional language changed.
Second. Okay. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell, vote by roll call.
The resolution carries unanimously?
Okay. Next is a presentation and possible action on a resolution placing before the voters on the November election ballot, a question regarding the transfer of ownership of Legion Park property from the city to the Morgan County RE3 School District. Mr. Myers?
All right. So this has been in discussion for quite some time. We didn't make last year's ballot, partly because getting the legal description and all the property boundary lines over there cleaned up took some time. So this ballot issue would authorize the city to make that transfer. There would still need to be some sort of contract or something, should it be approved. But because the Legion Park, as we call it, not Legion Field, which is the stadium, School District already owns, Legion Park is the rest of that area that belongs to the city, because that was given to the city from the American Legion with the premise that it would have to go to a vote before we divest our interest in it, that's the step.
Okay. Any questions? Clarification?
Mike Lee from the School District is here, and I promised them we'd put him on the spot.
I thought Mike just wanted to come see us. They don't want it now that it looks good and cleaned up?
Well, thanks, counsel, for the opportunity. Part of the reason I wanted to stand up here was to introduce our new superintendent of schools, who was new to Fort Morgan yesterday. This is Dr. James Hammack. He's our newly appointed superintendent of schools. So I dragged him here tonight to introduce him, so now you can have a face with a name and introduce the process. Plus, he also has a vested interest in this, is our new superintendent. I actually took him on a tour of the facility yesterday to kind of show him the layout of the football field, the baseball, both the Robin Weber Field and the American Legion Field, and some of the logistic issues of our easement through the Legion Park to get to the football field and our interest... to the football field, and our interest in just solidifying that total facility in baseball, football, and potentially soccer, as we look to long-term soccer expansion, either at our new middle school property or on the southeast corner of the football field. We've got a committee kind of working on that, where a proper location might be. So, this transfer and allowing the School District continue to make improvements to the baseball field that we're kind of an exclusive user of right now, would make common sense that we would actually be the owners of that facility, clean up our title issues, access to the football field, and just let us take that over in conjunction with the city's expanded program we have at Riverside Park. This would be just a real seamless operation. So, we're totally in favor of moving ahead with that, and we're, the district is willing to cover the cost of that election cost to put this ballot on there. We've had some discussion with John about addressing that, so we're prepared to cover that cost to complete this title transfer, assuming the voters approve that.
It's been a pleasure.
Welcome to Fort Morg...
Yeah, welcome to Fort Morgan.
Welcome.
Thanks very much.
So, Jason, on the ballot language, it has authorized to convey its interest. Is that a typical, like, phrase that's always used when you're giving something away? Convey its interest?
Ultimately, it's up to council to determine what exactly that'll look like. Generally speaking, in any sort of property transaction, there has to be consideration in order to make it a valid contract. So, whether it's a dollar or something else, I didn't want to tie council's hand or confuse the issue to the voters as to what exactly that transaction will look like, more or less just that the transfer is going to be authorized.
Okay.
There are still some outlying issues currently. We use the area down there to stockpile snow that's plowed. Is that something that'll continue into the future? Not a ballot question issue, but a property transfer issue to consider into the future. Also, one of the fields down there, the infield, was provided through GOCO funds, so ensuring some way that that facility remains open to the public per the GOCO grant, even though we won't own it anymore. If this is approved, we still are on the hook for GOCO monies if it's not left open to the public. So, things of those nature without getting this too complicated, like the last one.
Cool. Thanks.
Any other questions or clarification? If there are none, I would entertain a resolution.
So, for this resolution tonight, Jason, we're just, we're not agreeing to language, we're just agreeing that we're going to put it on the ballot in the November?
The language is provided in there, so if there's any change to the ballot language itself, now would be the time to do that.
Everyone...
The language states, shall the city of Fort Morgan be authorized to convey its interest to the property commonly referred to as Legion Park and Eddie Underwood Field to Morgan County School, our District R3E3? It would be the language.
Right, yeah. I just want to make sure everyone, like, that's part of the resolution, that that's binding. So, if everyone's okay with it. Sweet. All right. Your honor, I have a resolution to place before voters in November 2018 on the election ballot, a question regarding the transfer of ownership of Legion Park from the city of Fort Morgan to Morgan County RE3 School District.
Second. A resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
The resolution carries unanimously?
Thank you.
Moving forward.
Welcome to town.
When does he get a tour of, like, city facilities? We gotta set that up, you guys.
Whenever he wants.
Yeah.
I'll give you a call. He'll give you a call.
Next on the agenda, make sure I didn't forget one, is the budget calendar presentation of 2019 budget expenditures for the electric fund, gas, and sanitation.
I thought we decided we weren't giving them any money this year.
Really?
Good evening, council mayor. It's that time of year again where we present our annual budgets. I could go through it line by line, or I can just touch on the ones that I increased this year and the justifications for those, if that's what you wish.
Do you want everybody behind you to sit for two hours?
Well, I kind of was told back there, I was kind of threatened. So, anyway.
Since when have you listened, Mr. Linton?
I'm tired tonight. So, if you'd like me just to touch on my increases? I increased my maintenance system by 50 grand from 200 to 250, simply because we spent the last two years concentrating on fiber, and our maintenance has kind of gotten behind, so we need to catch up, hopefully in 2019. A lot of, not a lot of it, some of that will come with the new fiber, so new poles and stuff like that. And the next one was the overhead street lighting. I went from 25,000 to 40,000. We're gonna get more aggressive with our LED lights, sort of taking the old ones out and putting the new ones in, so that was the reason for that.
When you're doing that, are we making sure that they are smart, adaptable, or whatever?
A smart, adaptable LED light, it's the photocell that goes in it, so these will, just pull that one out, put a photocell in.
Okay.
You can sit at home, and if your light's too bright, you can just... So, yes, it's just a photocell there. That was basically the two that I increased. My capital items for 2019, it's, we're back to the master plan again. So, we're gonna finish our last 10-year master plan in about seven years, so it's time to start looking at another 10-year master plan. The next one's gonna be basically substation improvements. We've done everything prior to that, so I'm thinking 10 years, we could get through three, four substations, start with the ones that really need it, and move through the system. So, that's engineering, and of course, transmission lines and maybe transformers. So, we'll start looking at another 10-year master plan. Pickup, we're gonna replace an old 2001 or 2 Dodge pickup. We're gonna put a, buy another pickup with a dump bed on it. Seems to make more sense for our crews. Transformers, we just buy transformers during the year. 170 seems like a lot, but one new transformer, about 1,000 KDA, costs about 25 grand, so you don't get a lot for your money anymore. One-line rebuild, and that's the ALCO feeder, so that's basically from Highway 34 down to 144, where we'll tie into our substation feed down there. And that's basically it for me for next year.
Any questions?
You're saying no, Sasha. We'll get to your neighborhood soon.
Hey, hey, he said no.
The other big increase you had you didn't touch on was overtime expense.
Well, that got, last year it got reduced. I was a little uncomfortable with that. We like to schedule our outages, and then, of course, mother nature can sometimes surprise us like it did last night, so.
Maybe you had a Ouija board, saw it was gonna be a bad year next year and everything, so you said, oh, take it out.
It was $45,000 prior to 2017, and last year it was dropped, so this year I want to bring it back up.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Doug. Thanks. Have a happy fourth.
Doug?
Oh, innova...
You just thought you were good.
Yeah, I thought I was gonna get out of here early. So, we were asked, or tasked with how, what we're doing as far as innovation goes, and a couple of things that come to my mind are the public-private partnerships that we've established with Sierra Nevada, and then now with ALO. I think it's really gonna progress the city forward. I've always been kind of scared when it comes to operating our substations from our office, but with Sierra Nevada's cybersecurity stuff now that's in place, we can operate that with comfort, knowing that somebody can't jump on and turn your breaker off or get into our system. And then with ALO, the fiber, of course, it's huge, so I think that's really good. What we've done this year, as far as innovation goes, we struggle with this quite a bit. We have some discussions about it, actually, but I think what we did this year is rebuilding that transmission line in between our two substations and adding that express feeder, so we can, down the road, it's gonna increase reliability, plus maintenance we can do. We can turn each substation off now and not have to worry about overloading one and buying a transformer before we need to. So, that's kind of what we're, I think innovation is, anyway. Thanks. You guys have a happy fourth.
You, too.
Can I go now? Thanks, Gibby.
Well, go sit back there. Can't leave. Mr. Kirkendall? Mr. Kleimeyer? Are we going by what's on here or in here?
Well, actually, Mr. Kirkendall's not in the electric fund, he's in the general fund. I think his name got added inadvertently to the agenda. However, Mr. Shantz would be in this department, and so maybe I'll just substitute Sam for Mr. Kirkendall, if that's fair. So, Sam wasn't able to be here tonight, but I was certainly able to carry that ball for him. His budget is fairly simple. You have that in front of you under building maintenance. Again, I'll just hit the high points of what was changed in the budget. Everything else remained the same from last year, but just two items of note. Fuel and oil, we continue to just see fuel and oil increase in a lot of our accounts, so we did increase that slightly to cover Sam's travel around the city. He also switched vehicles this year, and it seemed to be one that, while it's a newer vehicle, uses a little more fuel, it's a larger truck than what he was driving. So, we just wanted to cover that, but he was able to lower his tool and equipment budget. He cut that in half. He has identified that he's purchased most of the tools that he needs, and so this is just really more of a replacement-type account now, so he feels pretty good about having everything he needs to maintain the buildings that we have, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions for the Sam's budget.
It's pretty straightforward.
On the innovative side, Sam didn't really give me anything, but I was thinking some about it, and he continues to try to look for ways to be more energy efficient in some of the changes that we do in the buildings. So, if we can substitute different lighting or something to be a little more energy efficient, we try to do that wherever we can, or different things of this nature, and I think that's pretty innovative whenever we have that opportunity, so. All right. Thanks.
You want to do yours now? What's that?
I'm done with this one. I'll be back.
Or you want me to do mine now? I can do it, sure.
Yeah, that's fine. So, Public Works and Engineering is also in the electric fund. Again, this is my first year to present this budget. Just two items of note, and they're really both related to travel, fuel and oil, and travel, education, and training. They're both increasing this year over last year, or next year over this year. You know, I didn't put this budget together for last year, but I do have several things that I travel to throughout the year. You may know that I sit on the Colorado chapter of the American Public Works Association, and because of that, I have several meetings that I travel to and other events that I try to be a part of as part of the American Public Works and to represent the city of Fort Morgan. So, some of those take me out of town. Sometimes there are flights involved, and so that travel increased next year over this year. Other than that, I think the rest of the budget maintains a consistent level from 2018. So, any questions I can answer about that one?
Any questions?
Innovatively, this is certainly in the streets department, but as you know, we're with our capital projects strictly for streets. We're trying a new fabric on the roads this year that we've never used before. This is a mat that goes down between the layers of asphalt, and it's got a real high tensile strength. You couldn't, you know, tear it if you wanted to. In fact, it's really hard to cut if you need to, you know, cut into it. So, we're hoping that that will actually extend the life of our streets. It's new to me, it's new to Fort Morgan, so we're pretty excited to try that on our streets this year and see how that performs over the next several years, so.
I was gonna say, the portion of railroad that's done is, looks pretty good.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll have some more updates on where we're at with that project here in a bit, but, yeah, we're pretty excited about this new fabric, so.
Just real quick, and I think, but it just struck me, when you were talking about innovation, when we're looking at redoing our streets and everything like that, are we looking at, like, the bike lanes and trying to figure that stuff out at the same time?
Yep.
I thought that you said that we were before, so I just wanted to verify and make sure.
Yep, and we are, and we'll take the plan as we get the final report and look at the roads, you know, in particular railroad, maybe one that when we're striping is certainly wide enough to allow for bike lanes and different types of multimodal transportation. So, we'll look at that and see if this isn't the perfect candidate to start that program. Paint's fairly inexpensive, so. Yeah. Awesome. Thank you.
Do you have them numbered, John, or just?
Sorry?
Do you have them numbered, the way they come up, or just call them up?
Arm wrestling competition?
They were in order, but...
I think Mike being substituted for Sam kind of threw things off, so I think probably Jeannie, utility billing is next in numerical order.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am giving you the report on the budget for the utility billing department and looking at the changes that there wasn't a lot. I think I added, no, I left that the same, education. I think pretty much I copied. The data processing is a little higher, and that's because we're gonna be getting some PCs replacements out there. We already got the ones at the individual desks, but we're gonna be getting some at the front, where we take in the bills, you know, the money. So, that will be, but otherwise, no, I guess I really didn't change too much on it. For our, does anybody have any questions on the numbers as they are? Okay. For our innovation, I think probably one of the innovative things we did in the department was the restructuring, so that the utility billing department reported to me each of the individuals. It was a cost-saving thing, and I think that's always innovative when you save some money, because we needed a general accountant in the finance department, and so we made that change. I think it's been good for the people there. I'm not trying to brag, but I think that they're developing more of an independent nature and are doing just an excellent job and learning other things. Things aren't quite as much structured as they were before, so I think that's been good for those people. Another thing that we did upfront, we just actually got the signature from the mayor on a new agreement with the collection agency here in town with Wakefield. We're actually going to be turning over our accounts much sooner. We used to wait two to three years to turn them over, and by then, the people pretty much were pretty hard to get a hold of. And so, we did convince them that we would lower the, we would pay them less, but we would give them the accounts sooner, and it's gonna take a little bit of a load off of the people in the front office. And Jason worked with them to get all the words in there exactly as he wanted them to be, so it all worked out great, and the mayor signed last week. So, within two weeks, we're gonna be turning over quite a few built-up old accounts, so that will hit our financials. We will see that, but then hopefully we'll see money coming in, too, when we reverse them. The other thing is, we did, what I'd like to do for next year is, we're looking at outsourcing our billing and printing, our mailing and our printing of our bills. We've already contacted some vendors and gotten some price quotes from them. We're not sure exactly how soon we would proceed, because we did earlier in the year buy a whole bunch of our special paper that we print the bills on. You know, when you get your bill's house, it's a pretty thing on the back. Well, we have a lot of those, so we might be putting it off a bit and not doing it right away, even though I think there'll be some advantages. If we don't do it, we may have to buy an inserter machine, and you can see that's $20,000 at the bottom of the page there, so, you know, we can spend a bit on having someone do that. So, you know, we can spend a bit on having someone do that piece for us if we're saving $20,000. Although I figured it out, and it's really only about two years, and it's a break-even again, so it has to be a better solution, or we won't do it. The other thing was, hopefully, we're going to figure out a way maybe to in-source the way we do payments. I would like to have the money come directly to us instead of going through an intermediary like it does now. I think that would be a, a big, really good change, something really interesting and exciting for the staff, so. That's it.
Thanks. Any questions?
Jeannie, we had some conversations, and I had a few citizen phone calls about translation assistance in your department for when people come to pay their bills in person or having different things translated. Is that something the department's something out for innovation and better customer service, or that would need to?
Today, we had an extremely good example of a problem with communication. I don't want to go into the details. I mean, not that they would be able to tell, but I don't want to go into the details, but it was a, it was just a, a way, we couldn't make them understand, you know, what we were trying to say. And they didn't have an interpreter. Most people do bring interpreters with them, but there is a, there's an app, actually, that, you know, my husband and I used in France and in Italy, and it's an awesome app, and you can speak into it, and it will, it would interpret their words, and then you can speak back to them, and they will interpret yours. So there is a solution without actually having to spend a lot of money. It's like $7.99. So we might look into that. But otherwise, if that doesn't work, we will look into other things, like the telephone ones where you dial them. But you pay for that every month whether you use it or not. And like today was probably the biggest instance I've seen of having a problem. We do have, Kendra, our new billing lead, does speak Spanish, and we do have a few times that she needs to. She was speaking Spanish today and, you know, with someone, so it does, that's probably more common. I think a lot of Somali people actually do bring interpreters along if they can't speak. So, anything else?
Thank you. Doug Hoffman.
It's going to be about efficiency, Honorable Mayor and Council. So my budget hasn't changed from last year. Any questions?
No, it hasn't.
So.
I got 200 more on training.
Was it?
So you lied to us. So, no, you're pretty much same as you were last year.
So straight across.
So, what are you doing innovatively?
Just right now, fiber survival mode. No.
I could imagine that's been a nightmare for you.
Really want to create a one-stop shop, you know? We're trying to go paperless pretty much throughout the finance, so CDMing, doing online transactions, a lot more online and not having the paper process, so. And efficiencies, so just really trying to increase the efficiencies. With that, some of the improvements I'd like to see, and that where you would like to work on, is of course a online PO authorization process, and it could be virtually by email. And we'd have, instead of a week turnaround, could have it in a day turnaround, increase efficiencies, especially when we're, when we're going after tons of product and got a return, you know, get it in and return it back. And another one, and I mentioned, I guess, even on our tour, our procurement dollar limits. And look at that. So, I thought they'd had the computer up. I wanted to share a couple photos of the two warehouses we operate right now, but that's fine. Because we have fiber stuff out in our outside storage barn.
One in the middle of the yard there.
Yeah, there's at least 50 pallets of merchandise out there in that, and the warehouses. Any questions?
No?
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug. Keep up the innovative work. Mr. Nation.
Much like Doug's, I have very few changes in my budget. I did make a little bit of an increase in my fuel and oil, and that's not because of Steve's problem where prices are going up. I just kind of overestimated how much travel I'd be doing during the year with all my meetings, so I just wanted to back that off to be a little more realistic with what I'm anticipating needing next year in that budget line item. Then the only increase that I did have is, for the last couple of years I haven't, or since last year, I'd missed putting money in my employee recognition account, and I wanted to make sure that I had money in there, so next year I could do something for my superintendents if I felt the need through the year. And so I had one decrease and one increase, so that was, everything else is staying the same. Any questions?
No.
I have the joy of spending a lot of other people's money, so when you look at my budget, it's very small, but I deal with big dollars in some of the other departments throughout the year, so.
It's fun, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. So.
Any questions for Brent? Well, as far as innovation, and once we get our fiber network up, and you and I kind of talked about my little knowledge about smart technology and starting to utilize that on a citywide, what do you see, or what are your visions right now?
I think the big thing that, and we've already started looking into this, we've looked at some demonstration projects, potentially bringing them into the city would be going to the smart meter type of system. The big advantage that you have with that is, we could potentially get away from even needing to send our meter readers out into the city. They do have systems that, the, and we're starting to look at this more in depth, but the types of reader, or ERTs that we use within our meters right now, there's technology out there that you can install one electric meter almost on a block, and it'll actually read all the gas meters on that block, all the water meters on that block, and then all the electric meters on that block, and then download that information in that meter and then transmit it back to, you know, the office. And so I think that's the direction we're probably going with that type of technology. We definitely, the fiber system is something that would make that happen, because we need points that we can send that data to, and then a way to get it back to us. And so I know Doug's already been looking at that technology. We've met with a few companies that are out there to start looking that direction. And you start to then get into the situation where, once you get the smart meters in place, you can start having the discussions about being able to turn off people's power without going out and actually physically pulling their meter can out, and there's all kinds of different things that come along with just the smart meters themselves. But that's probably the next big step that we will be looking at innovation-wise within the departments that will encompass everybody in the utility side of it, so. My, my one big innovation thing that I wanted to bring up again was, a couple of years ago, we were looking at a way to utilize some ditch water that we had, that we had acquired from the school district, and then also look at helping out the golf course with some expenses. And the irrigation project up at the golf course was one of my ideas that we came up with and have implemented and are now using. It allows us to get a better quality of water down to the golf course for them to put on the turf in the, the heat of the summer, and it also reduces their costs for applying water. And so it's something that's had multiple benefits to the golf course, and it also allows us to use a water source that we hadn't been using in the past, so.
The course looks good.
Yeah, of course, does look good right now.
Guess I should say that to tie.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
Questions for Brent?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
The man behind the window.
Dun, dun, dun. In person. Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. My budget has increased in some areas, decreased in other areas. Next year is another PC refresh, where, where we will go through and upgrade most, or half of the PCs in the city. We're also going to move to Office, well, we're going to look at moving to either Office 365 or Google Apps. I, I knew this day was coming. I've tried to put it off for as long as I can, but it's time for us to kind of join the rest of the world. I know the community college has it, the school district definitely has it, the county has it, so some form of cloud-based email system, so that's probably what we'll move to now. That'll give us the ability to eliminate four servers from our inventory, so, and provide access to data on-demand for our users. That's pretty much it. I mean, we're going to replace the Casell server next year, or we're going to look at it anyway and try to build something a little beefier than what we have now, although what we have is still pretty good. That server is getting up there in years, so. And if we go to Office 365, that'll give us the ability to replace our email server, which our email server, if, I don't know if anybody remembers Tyler Technologies, but it was a repurposed Tyler Technology server. So we just took it and recycled it, and that's been our email server since 2011. So it's time for that to go. You know, without email, they start brandishing torches and pitchforks, so. And I have a fairly tall desk, so I can't really hide under it all that well. As far as innovation is concerned, this last year, we hired a GIS technician, or Geographic Information Services technician, Pat Fitz, who has just hit the ground running. He's doing incredibly well. We're in beta right now with testing data on-demand for our utilities departments, electric and gas. They're helping us out on that and helping us work out some of the bugs on that. But eventually, you'll be able to pull up information on poles, either through a smartphone or, in this case, tablets. So that's one area we're really trying to innovate in. I think that's pretty much it. I mean, our other innovations are just efficiencies. You know, I write a lot of scripts to do my job, automate things, and that really helps. A lot of PowerShell, a lot of Visual Basic. Any questions?
So do you build the servers?
I do now. I do now. We, we're able to save probably about $3,000 per server.
I was going to say.
By just building them in-house. I mean, a server is an over glorified PC. I mean, that's really what it is. So we just keep a stock of shelf, or stock of parts on the shelf, which is also handy for us, because we don't have to wait 24 hours for a hard drive. We just pull one off the shelf and swap it in. You know, actually, our email server, most of those hard drives have been replaced since they, since we first bought it, so. But yeah, we're able to save a substantial amount of money by doing that.
And what do you anticipate as far as changes, or do you look ahead to and everything once we've got the fiber network set up and everything that you think?
Well, I, I know for us, it'll be nice, because we'll have a fallback, fallback in case our fiber gets cut, our fiber from Zayo gets cut, we'll have a fallback, or actually we may end up swapping the two and keeping that, Zayo as a fallback. It's always nice to have double as far as your internet connection's down, especially if we're going to move to something like Office 365, where it's all software as a service or in the cloud, I guess is what you could call it, but, you know, software as a service. So they're going to need on, all the time, on-demand network capabilities, so. And we'll set up a automatic failover with our firewall, so if it goes down, it'll pick up on the other connection. That's going to be one really big benefit for us. Also, you know, I think part of the franchise agreement was getting TV to the police department, which Charter quoted us $20,000 one time to do that. With the franchise agreement, we get that for free, so, especially in the EOC room, where the officers can stay up to, up to date on the latest news reports and things like that. So fiber's going to be a huge benefit for us. Eventually, I, I believe there's, we'll, we'll be able to establish a municipal Wi-Fi network, so our officers can go around town, fire department can pull up building plans. I mean, this is in the future, but they can, the officers can go around town and, you know, get the information they need when they need it. Same thing with the fire department. The utilities departments will be able to relay that information over that municipal Wi-Fi network. What we have now is, it's not, it's not, it doesn't cover, cover the city. Most of our wireless access points extend from city buildings, so wherever there's a city building, you have Wi-Fi, but we don't have city buildings all over, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
And your line item for advertising, is the advertising services that your department provides, or advertising for the city, or?
Actually, it's the cityoffortmorgan.com website.
Cool, okay.
And it just keeps, it goes up every year.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure. Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Nelson. Tony.
Mine's pretty straightforward, again, like always. I'm increasing my engineering and consulting. We're going to help out the GIS. We're going to get some more consulting for the, our GIS side of it, so that's why the increase for my engineering and consulting. And on top of the GIS, we're going to get a iPhone. Well, we already got the tablet purchased, and we're working with Nelson and Pat on getting the GIS and stuff, so that'll be another charge on the data part of it, for us to utilize that tablet for the GIS, so that's the increase. On the telephone side, and capital items, I like to talk during our tours. I would like to get a smaller Borne machine. The city right now does have a bigger Borne machine that Light and Power has, that we can go anywhere up to eight-inch lines, you know? But would, would help us out as, not just the department, but as a city as a whole, get a smaller Borne machine that you can get perpendicular into an alley, and you can get a service line into finished yards and stuff. With a Borne machine right now, currently, we're using a pneumatic maul, and depending on the ground situation, the weather situation, and frozen grounds and stuff, it could be very time-consuming for that pneumatic maul to get through the backyard. It will, depending on the size of the yard, will roll back the grass two or three places, dig a hole, shoot to them holes, and then we, that's the only way we can verify that that pneumatic maul is heading in the right direction. Get a small enough Borne machine to get perpendicular in there, we can get in there, shoot it in, get it back, but still be large enough to install two-inch lines, so if a bigger service was needed, we could still use it for that, or to just shoot underneath a ditch, we can still use that smaller machine without getting the bigger machine out there. And I'm looking at our fuel maker, that's our natural gas pump that we use to fill our bi-fuel pickups. It's coming on 20 years old, and the compressors are getting weak. We're not getting up to our 3,500 pounds pressure for our full tanks, so if we're spending more time trying to utilize our natural gas pickups with the wore-out compressors and compressor cost, to rebuild a compressor, there's four compressors in that little pump that we have, and they're roughly 2,500 apiece to rebuild them, and electronics in it, I didn't have it even priced, but I know 2,500 per compressor for rebuilding the compressors. I know that, because we have rebuilt two of them already. So any questions on the budget?
Where do you advertise?
We advertise on the radio, the newspaper whenever possible.
Uh huh.
Per PUC regulations for our public workers.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, our innovation side, we, we built a, a time card on, using Excel, which saves a lot of time for me and my guys, does all the math for us, obviously, if anybody's familiar with Excel. All they do is put the numbers in, drop-down boxes, all that. And we're starting to utilize, we can get radio reads for our larger commercial meters that the utility billing ladies used to have to walk and manually read every month. Now we can get our radio reads, our ERTs, that we're calling them now, on our larger commercial meters, our rotary meters with our correctors on them, and we can have them, and we can install an ERT on them now, which will save the utility billing ladies a lot of time, they can just continue driving, they won't have 25 meters, they'll have to go manually read every month. And last year, you guys, or for this year- go manually read every month. And last year, you guys, or for this year, this year's budget, we did a SCADA upgrade. And with the new SCADA software, we can use, it has more capabilities. Instead of me every month downloading from our rocks, from our stations, all of our information, it just emails me every month with my reports, everything. So that's a little more productive. So that's kind of where we're at on our innovation, just being more productive and trying to save time and money wherever we can.
Good.
Awesome.
Any other questions?
Isn't that building in the middle of the yard, isn't that the electric, or the gas department's building?
Yes, it is.
I kind of thought, so you charging them rent?
No.
I just, just thought.
Trying to be a good neighbor.
Good idea. Now that's innovative.
That's innovative, too. Thank you.
You skated one, Doug. Bob Evans.
Oh, we're just getting started.
Good evening. All right, I only have a couple of changes on my budget. The landfill fees are going to go up by $25,000 because there's potential of $1.50 per ton that the county is going to add for next year. So that's going to jump that up a little bit. And then we're going to purchase a truck, and that's $215,000. They're getting more expensive. And really, the rest of the budget's pretty much the same. Overtime's down a little bit.
Can you explain to me what alley approaches on the, right in the middle?
What, you guys want to do that?
I'm just learning. I appreciate it. Thanks, Brent.
He just takes some of my money.
So a couple of years ago, we decided to take money out of several budgets for alley approaches. And what happens is when you turn off the streets and you enter the alley, there's usually just, in the older alleys, there's just strictly the sidewalk there and then the gutter pan. And Bob's trucks are extremely heavy, and they have to come to a stop right before they get there. And we're finding out that it has a tendency to work the dirt and cause low spots. Well, the reason I get involved in it in my departments is that we also usually typically have a sanitary sewer manhole right at that location, too. And it causes a large problem when the road grader comes in there, which is then Steve's department and JW's guys to try to work a blade over that. And so we take a little bit of money out of all three departments, and we go in and work those alley approaches. And we're trying to concrete as many of them as we can with what we put into the budget. And JW has prioritized the ones that are the most critical to get done. And so we're just trying to get to those and get them fixed so they're not a problem. It makes it easier on his trucks as he's coming through, makes it easier on my sewer guys, and hopefully we're getting a good product in there that's cutting down on some of JW's times when they're using their, their graders down there. So.
Cool. That's pretty innovative, working together. Love it.
Any other questions on sanitation?
Innovations?
Innovation, the biggest thing is we're going to finish putting concrete pads in all the residential alleys this year.
Great.
So I'll be coming back in a couple of weeks seeking your approval to get that done.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Okay, mayor and council, that is our first round of budget presentations. We'll have many more. We're still kind of working ahead of you guys by about a month or two on working through these budgets. Jeanie and I are meeting with the managers and, and helping to develop those. So there will be a lot more where these came from.
We look forward to it.
Yes, we do.
Public comments.
Reports by officials and staff.
Yes, I, I do have a couple. I know it's late. I'm going to keep it really short, but I have to mention the strange storm we had last night and how quickly the city was on top of it. I, I got an email today from a resident who, who said he wanted to give a shout-out to the city of Fort Morgan's crews. He, he said that the National Weather Service indicated 70 mile an hour winds at 3:30 a.m. in the form of a downburst. He woke up and went out to assess the damage to his residents, and city crews were all already out on the street responding to debris, power issues, and even the fire department was out on a, on a call. So really, every department pitched in today. It was pretty amazing how quickly we responded to that. And all, a lot of departments were getting phone calls about what to do with downed branches. And, you know, they split up the city. One Parks Department was working the south, or the north side, I think, and the streets was working the south side. And they really got it done. So kudos to everybody on that. And also, kudos to, from everybody who is in this room tonight. This room was about 85 degrees at about one or two o'clock this afternoon. Sam Chance saved us somehow. The, the service provider for our chiller wasn't going to be able to make it today. They're, they're on the front range. He stayed on top of it, stayed after him, finally got him to come out. They worked on it for a couple hours, and it started blowing cool air about probably 3 o'clock. And it would have been miserable if, if Sam had not done that. So that, a big thank you to him. And I also just wanted to mention Chief Schultz has been named the Chair of the Technical Assistance Committee of the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police, which is a great honor for Paul as well as the department and the city.
Nice work.
Is that the deal you're having at the college?
No, that was a, that's something different. I'm going to present that whenever you're ready, mayor.
Oh, go ahead.
The International Association Chiefs of Police, that was the, so this is the largest police management association in the country, has contacted four cities in the United States, we're one of them, to offer a grant-funded community listening session. We took advantage of it. They're paying for it. They'll be coming out August 6th and assisting us in hosting this meeting at Morgan Community College in the Founder's Room from 10 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. They're paying for all associated costs to include lunch for participants. And they're flying out a professional facilitator from Cedarville University in Ohio. And it's, it's our opportunity to hear from the community in a professionally facilitated meeting. We're kind of looking forward to it.
And the hours for what again?
10 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Two and a half hours. Their rules is a limit of 30 people at the meeting, a small group. But we're hoping to hear some good things. They wouldn't have selected us if they weren't happy with what they're seeing. So we're kind of excited about that.
I think Steve's got something.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I mentioned that I'd give you a quick update on street projects. So we're working on railroad currently. With any lock, railroad will be finished by the end of next week.
Wow.
And then we'll be moving on to some of the others, Barlow, 8th Avenue, and some of those. I don't know exactly which one. I think 8th Avenue is next, but don't hold me to that. But we're glad to have railroad almost finished. We're almost to Main Street. And like I say, we should be finished completely with railroad by the end of next week. So. And then secondly, I'd like to introduce Derek Mills. Derek's been sitting patiently at the back of the room. I told him today, I said, "My second council meeting had five executive sessions and went to almost midnight, so it's only fair that your first one would go very late." But Derek is our new engineer in training. You all will remember that we talked about that when we were out at the water treatment plant, hiring an EIT. Well, Derek is that person. We're excited to have Derek on board. He's been with us now a week, and he's definitely hit the ground running and is doing great work for both Brent and I. So just wanted to put a name to a face so that you, when you see Derek out and about, you'll know who he is. So I don't know if you want to say anything, Derek, or, but anyway, it's Derek Mills. So.
Steve, I got a question for you.
Yeah?
Don't, don't leave.
Sure. Okay, do you want to do that now?
Well, I don't know if you wanted to say anything or not.
I just want to thank everybody for giving me the chance to work for the city of Fort Morgan. And it's been a, it's a great opportunity. It's a great job. And I'm slowly learning how great of a community it is, too. And I look forward to just exploring this more and more as I live here for a much longer time.
Where are you from?
Uh, Durango.
Quite a bit different.
Yeah, but a good difference.
Yeah.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir.
I was wondering about Stormwater. I know staff has done a lot of work and council has given some direction in the past. And I was wondering if you could speak to that and tell us where we're at as far as implementing the Stormwater utility?
You're talking about the Stormwater utility fee? Yeah, I think it's ready to implement at any time. I, I think the fees are set. It can be implemented.
So what do we need to move forward on that? Is that something council just needs to give direction for?
Yeah, basically, there were a couple of kind of big things going on that we kind of wanted to hold off on it for a while. But it is ready to go, as far as I know.
Yeah, as far as I know, it is.
And I think utility billing is ready for it. And so, you know, if you guys want us to bring that forward, we can do that.
Okay. Do we want to bring that forward?
We will address the data.
Okay.
Schedule anything.
All right.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have a couple of more books for you since you got in here. Seriously, I mean, they're, you bet.
And is there anything else, John?
I got, just real quickly, I wanted, haven't been in front of you with a fiber update. There's been a lot going on. We've been trying to push out a lot of information on social media. ALO's been doing a good job with their social media campaign, too. But they are moving along very nicely. There will be a lot of ALO executives in town later this month. And with some, I think they're getting closer with some announcements about potential rollout dates and everything. On the budgetary side of it, we do know that we are going to have a change order coming in on the construction side of it. Now that we've got the final design done, I think I remember telling you that when we bid this out, that there was going to be potential changes when we got the final design. So just to make you aware, just here, that at some point in the near future, we'll be bringing that change. We've also had to address the splicing issue in the system. That's something that ALO is handling because that's kind of their side of it, to make sure that the quality is there and that there's no issues with all those little tiny connections and everything. And so, so we've got a couple more things monetarily that we'll be bringing with this project, but it's still looking like it's still completely under the $4 million that we have in the budget. So I'm not foreseeing any type of issues there. But we will have to make a couple of adjustments. So, so hopefully here shortly, we'll be able to look at where they're going to be deploying first and when that, when that first part of the system is going to actually have, like, going through it and information moving. So we're kind of getting excited, but we're still having to work with ALO on their deployment schedules and everything. So we'll have more, more for you in the near future on that. Okay?
Cool.
Hey, I got a question.
Yeah.
We've been talking about gigabit speed. Everything I've seen coming from ALO is talking about 300 megabytes.
That's their minimum, that's their kind of, that's their advertising kind of package minimum that they want to do. You can still, they're still going to have gigabit packages if you want them.
Okay, good.
But they start at the 300, and that's kind of their benchmark where they start and they work their way up.
Yeah, somebody had seen that and asked me about it, and they, I thought it was going to be gig. So.
Yeah, yeah. It's one of those things, and Nelson can speak to it, that most people's technology that they use, you can't handle a gigabit speed anyway. So, so most people are more than happy to have the 300, but they'll offer the, the gig for people if they really want to pay for it. So.
300 would be a huge upgrade for my home.
Yeah.
Amen.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Brent.
Mayor, council, I have one other item, if I may.
Sure.
Just a clarification on our community listening session. As I mentioned, IACP is setting the number of attendees. But I want to make sure the community is aware. If anybody wants to attend that, they need to contact Michelle Miller, our administrative assistant, either by phone or by email to RSVP. They have pretty strict rules on this. They don't want to have a, a big rush of people attending. It is limited to 30, and we do need to have RSVPs for that. So they need to contact her at the police department, Michelle Miller, and she'll be glad to put them on the list.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think we're done. VMAs.
Okay. Bids, meetings, and announcements.
We are accepting rate schedules for 2018, 2019 weed and snow removal services until 3 p.m. on Thursday, July 12. Also accepting sealed bids for police vehicles until 3 p.m. on July 26. As far as the calendar, July 4th, all city offices are closed for Independence Day. July 10th at 1:30 is the Senior Center Advisory Board meeting at the Senior Center. July 11th at 5:30 is the Golf Course Advisory Board meeting at Quail Dunes. And July 17th at 6 o'clock is the next city council meeting here at City Hall.
Very good.
Next is an executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-4024E. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes. Wastewater treatment. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Do you want to make a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will adjourn to executive session.